All right, I'd like to call this special call meeting to order if we can have roll call please.
Vera.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Pedro.
Here.
Miranda. Maniscalco.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, City Council. Because of the COVID-19 state of emergency, this special call meeting of the City Council is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69, as extended by Executive Order 20-150 and by City Council Resolution Number 2020-225. It is being conducted by remote participation or teleconferencing, which is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as communication media technology. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss and approve time-sensitive matters in response to delays resulting from the COVID-19 state of emergency, as well as to conduct any other new business. The public has had an opportunity to participate in advance by voicemail messages recorded or written emails. Those written items have been distributed to City Council, and I would like them at some point to be received and filed and made part of the record. There are those who have pre-recorded messages, or at least the capability. Are there any of those available today, Metta Clerk?
No, sir.
The other option is to request to be able to speak live during public comment, and that, I believe, Mr. Chairman, is the next portion of your agenda. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. All right.
Miranda here, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilman Mar...
Yeah, I'm on.
All right, good. We will go to the public conference. Do you want to like...
Yes, sir. The first speaker we have is Barbara Heineken. Ms. Heineken, if you could give me a minute, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Heineken. I'm a Tampa resident and former recycling coordinator for the city. I've served from 1989 to 2007. I'm here today not only as a resident, but also as a representative of the Carton Council, an industry organization devoted to growing recycling of carton packages in the U.S. And by that I mean milk, juice, and broth type cartons, which contain high-quality paper fiber and are recyclable and sustainable. So number 131 on today's agenda is a contract between the City's Solid Waste Department and Waste Management. The service provider has been processing the city's recyclables since the program started in 1988. However, this proposed contract raises some important concerns. For example, the service provider increased the costs and at the same time has removed from the acceptable list cartons and 3 through 7 plastics, both of which are main stages of recycling programs throughout the southeast and around the Tampa area. Furthermore, the new agreement would give a vendor the ability to charge up to $150 per ton contaminated material, and this would be the highest rate in Florida. So I'm concerned that under this agreement, the service provider has no obligation to recycle contaminated goods. The city's contamination rate is over 20%, which is about average for Florida, and that means the service provider may not be required to recycle anything that enters their facility. Concerning the ability to sort and sell bales of cartons, the service provider in Tampa was giving up grant funds from the Carton Council to install an optical sorter, which sorts cartons at their facility. This they did for about six years, and then discontinued their practice of sorting cartons into grade 52. So they're in markets for these cartons, both in the U.S. and in Mexico. And in fact, a facility in Sarasota is presently sorting and baling these cartons and selling them to a tissue mill in Mexico. So, and we are seeing much more interest in cartons by recyclers to be used as feedstock for products that are in high demand, like tissue and tappling and building product. And finally, it takes a lot of effort to educate residents on what can be recycled, motivate them to do just that. It takes just as much or even more effort and money to re-educate residents to not recycle something that they once could recycle, since behavior was already established. So the Carton Council has researched, and the reports that show that consumers expect cartons to be recycled, and in fact, the Tampa Bay Recycles website says all residential recycling programs throughout Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties now recycle the same items. So by taking these out, this is no longer true. I'm asking that the city of Tampa have cartons included in their list of acceptable like they are in other communities. So that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next.
Yes, thank you. The next speaker we have is Rick Fernandez.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I think I've been unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, and good afternoon to you all. My name's Rick Fernandez, 2906 North Elmore Avenue, Tampa 33602. That's in Tampa Heights, and specifically relevant to my purpose here this afternoon, it's roughly four blocks south of Robles Park Village. I am here today with reference to your agenda items two and three related to the Project Safe Neighborhoods funding. And I'm here in support of Robles Park Village, and it is my understanding that the Tenant Council for Robles Park Village also supports this. So in essence, I am here as a neighbor and resident of Tampa Heights in support of my neighbors at Robles Park in the village. I do have a concern, and having looked through your agenda item, there's a reference there in line item or in agenda item three about the $561,000 being transferred into this fiscal year's budget, ending September 20, or September 30 of 2020. And I am curious as to what that might mean, should these funds not be utilized for the intended purpose before the end of the fiscal year, which is only, what, two months away? A little more? So I do raise that question just as a matter of priorities. My other point in being here, I had a, I had the opportunity to visit Robles Park Village and walk the property with the president of the Tenant Council last week, Riva Iman, who I believe is probably going to be speaking to you today if she hasn't provided written comment. And I was frankly shocked to hear that over the course of the last just few weeks, and actually even few days, that there had been multiple occasions of gunfire, automatic gunfire, wounding and deaths that have occurred on the property of Robles Park Village. And interestingly enough, and tragically enough, even the evening after my visit, that very Friday, there was another incident, although in that case, I don't believe there were any actual physical injuries. What is particularly amazing to me is that it seems that like Las Vegas, what happens in Robles Park Village stays in Robles Park Village, because I had never heard a single thing about these instances. Nothing in the press, nothing on TV, and nothing from any dais of leadership. So I'm teeing this up for conversation. I'm concerned as a resident and as a neighbor, and frankly, I think the city has dropped the ball here. I'm not sure who ultimately is responsible, but I do think that more transparency is definitely needed, and citizens and residents of Robles Park Village need your protection. I will cede whatever time I have left. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Chair, that will conclude those that have logged onto the webinar. If you would like, I can read the names of the ones that are registered.
Yes, please.
Okay. First, we have Rusty McClellan, Marilyn Healy, Thomas O'Neil, Todd Pressman, and Angel DeAngelo.
Okay.
End of the list.
All right, so that concludes the public comment. There is nobody else in the queue? Nobody waiting? Nobody having trouble logging in?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. We have the addendum to the agenda. If I can get a motion to approve that with a second. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
So I get... We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. I believe the second was Councilman Dingfelder. Roll call vote for that.
Question on the motion, real quickly, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The, I don't, I'm not looking at the addendum to the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure that we were going to be voting on some of these items separately.
Yes, I saw you had some items pulled, and...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on Mr. Dingfelder's concern?
Yes, sir.
I'm Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. A reminder, City Council, that when the addendum is approved, it just approves the procedural process of adding it to the agenda. What you vote on, on the items on the addendum, require separate votes. So please be aware of that.
I have item 15, item 18, that has requested to be pulled by Councilman Dingfelder. Is that correct, Councilman Dingfelder?
Right, but there were some others that, for some reason, didn't get, didn't get there. And I'll just, I'll just list them very quickly and ask for a separate vote.
Okay, let me know now, and I'll mark them. Go ahead. Which are the, all of them?
Okay, and this is consistent with where I was, I believe, to go to item, item two, item three, item four.
Okay.
And, hold on. Excuse me one second. Sorry. I asked for a discussion on item nine, which is the one that Ms. Heineken was speaking to. And, and then item, item 10, 11, 15.
Okay.
28 and 29.
Okey-dokey. 15, 16, 28, 29.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I also have number eight. You've got a request for that to be pulled for discussion. That was originally on the July 16th agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna care with, I'm gonna care with number eight and roll in. I don't care.
Okay, so, all right, that's the items part. All right, anything else?
No, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Hearing none. We'll move on to item number one. There were... Yes, sir, Mr. Shelby?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you take a roll call vote on the approval?
Not yet.
Go ahead with the roll call vote. The motion was Councilman Miranda with the second from Councilman Dingfelder. Roll call vote for that.
Vera.
Yes.
Good. Good. Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Pedro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My aide has submitted for, I'm looking at two different agendas now. Item number eight and nine are referenced to the Safe Neighborhoods grant to be pulled for discussion.
Wait, wait. Which numbers are those? For two and three?
Well, I guess it's changed. I'm looking at another agenda here, but the original that I asked was, I think the original was number eight and nine, the other agenda I was, I saw. So I don't know if that's changed.
If I can, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
That's number two and three now.
Number two and three.
Two and three.
Mr. Chairman, council should realize that the numbers that were associated with the November 16th, excuse me, November, where am I, with the July 16th agenda, as a result of being placed on today's agenda, have been renumbered. So for instance, and let me have, take the opportunity right now to make a comment with regard to Ms. Heineken. She referenced number 31 on the agenda, but that was really the old number. The item that she was actually making reference to today on your agenda of today is item number nine. So please, please, please make note of that. Thank you.
Yeah, so the draft agenda was available this morning. I went in and printed it up, and I double-checked everything, and then the final agenda came out about an act for a vote, which had the same numbers as the draft agenda, with the addition of several items under staff reports at the end. But I'll clarify each, you know, the numbers of there, Councilman Good, this has been renumbered, but those items are there for discussion, to be pulled for discussion. So nothing to worry about there.
I know that in reference to on Tuesday's meeting, a reference to the CDC, I did get a call, maybe when we ran a reference to a continuous on that item. I'm looking for the new number on the, in the sheet here.
The CDC?
Yes, sir. The housing, the developer was supposed to come back, ask them to come back and let us see a contract issue with them in their name. I received a call, remember, and a request to ask for a continuous.
A memo was sent out, and they asked that it be continued to a state. So when we get to that, that's at the end of the agenda. We'll, we'll have that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none. Go on to item number one, which, an email was sent out with information on this item that you should have seen come from our legal department. So go ahead with item number one, whoever wishes to take that. Is there any staff on the line?
Yes.
Of items. All right, who is this?
Yes, sir. This is Jan McLean, Assistant City Attorney with the, City Attorney's Office here. Thank you, sir. We're here on item number one, which is a first reading for an ordinance for revisions on chapter 24, sections 24, 5, 1 through 5, 23. This is revising and restating and modifying the downtown historic tourism marketing district. As you all are aware, this was an ordinance that was adopted a number of years ago and was, and is subject to ongoing litigation, but at this point in time, we are proposing revisions to the ordinance. And I have Julia Mandell with Gray Robinson, who is representing the city, and she would like to provide you with status. Before I turn it over to her, the email that the chairman referred came from myself, had a memo on it, and a, with regard to a fish kind methodology document also attached, which is an updated document to the one that is contained in Sire. So we'll refer to that in the discussion by Mandell.
Good afternoon. This is Julia Mandell with the law firm of Gray Robinson, 401 East Jackson Street. As Ms. McLean said, our law firm has been representing the city of Tampa in litigation as it relates to the ordinance as it was previously adopted. We have updated you all in meetings, but suffice it to say that the litigation is ongoing and is on appeal, and so I really would be reluctant to get into too much discussion on the record as it relates to the litigation. That being said, the, I submitted a memo as well as the updated methodology to Ms. McLean this afternoon, upon realization that the one in Sire was not the updated one. I would ask for you to also take an action prior to any vote on this matter to accept those documents into the record. And I'll, available for any questions. Otherwise, this is the first reading of the ordinance. We will have a public hearing at second reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Mandell? The email that was sent, the documents that are in question were sent out to emails to council members. I received them. I hope that everyone else did receive them, and that we include that in the motion that, well, that we make a motion that those documents be added to, to this item before we take a vote for the ordinance reading. Any council members have any comments, questions, discussions?
Chairman Charlie Miranda, that's the one you talked about that says February 28, 2020?
This is the one that tourism marketing, I believe.
Yeah, got it. Got it. A special assessment mythology report.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the one.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right. So can I get a, I'm going to do two separate motions, just for clarity and the documents are included. Can we get a motion to accept the documents sent by Ms. Mandell to be added to this, this item?
Don't move. Second.
There was a motion, I believe, from Dingfelder and a second from Miranda? All right, if we can get a roll call vote?
Vera.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Pedro.
This is Councilman Pedro. Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, then we'll go to reading this ordinance for first reading consideration. I see Councilman Vera at the end. If Councilman Vera would like to take this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Reading number one. I hereby move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration in ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida relating to tourism marketing districts, amending the city of Tampa code of ordinances, revising and restating chapter 24.5, sections 24.5, 1 through 24.5, 2, 3, providing findings, modifying the downtown historic tourism marketing district, establishing the services to be provided within the district, providing for levy and process or collection of special assessments to fund the services provided within the district, providing an alternative to a uniform method for the collection of such special assessments, providing for a separate... providing, uh, an alternative to a uniform method, method for the collection of such special assessments, providing for a separate accounting of funds, providing for amendments to this ordinance, the collection of special assessments and the increase in special assessments beyond the maximum rate authorized, providing for corrections of errors and omissions in the assessment role, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much, do we have a second to this motion?
Second, Miranda.
We have a, uh, a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Pedro?
Pedro votes yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be on August twentieth, twenty-twenty at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our Public Safety Committee, but items two, three, and four were pulled for discussion, so we'll begin with item, uh, two, which goes along with item three. Uh, Councilman Ding Felder told those, uh, if we'd like to begin with those. Who would like to, uh, begin the discussion with item number two, Councilman Ding Felder, if you want to start off with any questions?
Well, I've had a lot of questions over the last couple of weeks on this item. I've had a lot of discussions with, uh, TPD and Chief Bennett and others, uh, Major Johnson, et cetera, um. I guess if anybody is listening from TPD and wants to chime in, uh, on this issue, um, that, that's fine with me, and then, and then if I have anything to ask beyond that, I'll, I'll ask. Um, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, I understand we have a violent crime problem, uh, um, in that, in a certain portion of East Tampa with lots of guns, lots of guns and gunshot victims, and I'm very concerned about that. But I'm also, but as always, I have a lot of concern about our civil liberties, and this particular item, I believe, has the potential to infringe on our civil liberties. So, I don't think I'm gonna vote in favor of it, um, but I'm all ears if, if TPD wants to convince me otherwise.
Okay, are there any other council members that wish to discuss items, uh, item number two, item number three, since they discussed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Goots.
I, I, I think for me, I like to know the utilization, how is the utilize, time, dates, is this, uh, uh, how will it be monitored? You know, I've got a lot of calls and questions in, uh, in favor from, from, from a lot of the neighborhood association president, but I got a, a lot of calls from a lot of the citizens as it relates to civil liberties and how will this, uh, uh, camera system be utilized, uh, in, in, in what manner? And also, actually, what, some of the areas that it may be posted, uh, will this, this circulate throughout the city, or is this gonna strictly be, well, you say a high-end crime area at East Tampa? So that's what, a couple of questions I want to see to get on the record so we can understand the purpose of, of the, uh, grant.
All right, do we have anybody on the line that can answer these questions?
Hi, it's, uh, Chief Dugan with TPD.
Hey.
Yeah, you know, the grant, the grant is there, um, it's, uh, attached, so any questions in there would, should be answered. Um, you know, it's very, it's a variety of technology as far as the cameras, it, it's, um, you know, it's still up for determination, but, uh, it's gonna be attached to, uh, current technology, I don't know if people are aware of it, but we have cameras throughout the city of Tampa, not in any specific neighborhoods. Um, so it's just an expansion of the, of the, of current technology and programs that we have. Um, and, you know, if there's specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right, any questions for the chief?
I guess, again, the, the monitoring of the cameras, because a lot of people are saying that, will, will, will this be on all the time, looking at just all type of issues communities? Is this, uh, turned on at a certain time, or you have a shooting, or a murder, is that when the camera will be looked at? Or is this gonna be constantly monitored, just surveillance people? So I guess we've gotta get that on the record, because those are the questions that are being asked.
Yeah, well, some of the cameras, so, some of the cameras will be activated, um, when there's gunshots detected, and then there are other cameras that could be used, uh, throughout the city of Tampa that are more mobile. And those cameras could potentially be, uh, monitored all the time, or specific, or, or part-time.
Okay, so basically the grant is just not for our crime, as you were saying, but you will have some cameras utilized all over the city and not just, well, you just work in the black community.
Correct, they are specifically targeting our violent crime hotspots, uh, but there are some that could be moved around and used in other places.
Uh, has the police department gotten with any, uh, neighborhood associations, crime watch programs, and to get a feel on, on what their take on this, uh, this project, maybe if the grant is awarded?
Yes, we have, uh, reached out to our neighborhood watch people, um, we spoke to some of the people on Robles Park, and we, um, they're, everyone's in favor that we've talked to.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, any other questions for the chief, Councilman Ding Felder, since you had pulled the item for discussion?
Uh, yeah, just, just one last, um, clarification, when I read the fourth attachment to the agenda item, it is very, very specific and calls out East Tampa. I, I recognize that some of these cameras might be portable at a later date, um, and used, and used elsewhere at a later date, should, should the need arise, or should, you know, uh, should, should TPD decide to deploy them elsewhere. But right now, I wanna clarify, and I've probably read this application much more thoroughly and recently than the chief, because he's got a lot more on his plate. Um, but I just wanted to clarify that this particular grant application specifically focuses and targets, um, East Tampa, because I guess recently, in the last year or two, uh, that's been the high gun time area. So, um, uh, just, just with that clarification, uh, I'm not a big fan of, of cameras and, and this type of technology, they've got license plate readers and cameras, they've got devices to break into cell phones, they're ordering sixty cell phones to monitor social media, et cetera. Um, and none of which I'm a big fan of from a civil liberties perspective. I recognize there has to be a balance between crime fighting and civil liberties, but I'm not really sure we're heading in the right direction on that balance, so.
All right, thank you very much, um, it has come to my attention that we have two pre-recorded, uh, comments pertaining to this matter, uh, that were not played during public comments, so I think it's, uh, correct in, uh, playing those, uh, public comments that have been pre-recorded that are, uh, regarding this, so that they, the people can be heard, um.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, I don't have specific knowledge as to what these public comments, uh, pertain to, um, they may or may not. Um, I would just, and I'm understanding that it might take a few minutes for that to be done, um, perhaps you can take more, uh, questions with regard to other items, and before we take action on any of them, we'll have those ready for you to hear.
All right, so we'll wait for those, uh, two public comments, yes, Councilman Goots?
I'm just, and again, it's, uh, maybe out of line, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just wondering, uh, since the Ding Felder pulled the item alone myself and making discussion about it, I'm just wondering if any of the other council members have any, uh, uh, thoughts on this particular item.
All right, any other council members have any, uh, questions or comments on items two or three?
Um, Vera, I'll, I'll speak to it if I may, I'm, I'm prepared to support this, uh, if, if I may, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm prepared to support this and, and carry it forward, I think it's important that, um, these are tools that we have to combat, uh, crime in our city and throughout the, uh, the community. And, um, these are, these are items that are done throughout the, throughout the city of Tampa, uh, not just in one particular area, that's always been my understanding. And I think that this is one tool that we have in the toolbox to, uh, to be able to do that. I, uh, we had a speaker, uh, before, Mr. Fernandez, uh, speak about, uh, a particular homicide, uh, that recently occurred, we've read on a number of them that have been occurring. Um, and, uh, to me, that's, uh, critical, so I'll, I'll be prepared to support this, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, any other council members?
Yeah, this is Carlson.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I read the, I read all the backup materials and, uh, um, you know, law enforcement is moving more and more towards using technology, and every, every, uh, service, every sector is moving more and more toward technology, so I'm not against the technology itself, I share the same concerns about, um, about, uh, civil liberties and privacy, but I think that's set, um, at the, at the policy level on how the tools are used. And so if there could be some robust discussion about that at some point, we can, we have a, um, uh, a, a big forum, uh, discussing rules and regulations around the police coming up in August, and so, uh, anybody who has any concerns can bring it up then, um, but, uh, I think we need to make sure that, that we set the right tone, and, uh, I think the administration is working toward that, and I, I've had several conversations with Chief Dugan, I know he is. Um, so, uh, we, we just need to make sure that it, it's not about the technology, it's about making sure that we don't infringe people's civil liberties, thank you.
Thank you very much, are there any other council members, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, um.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Councilman Goots.
I, I just wanna make it, uh, it's, it's a hot item, uh, especially in my community as you talk about civil liberties and, uh, and as you know, several months ago before I became ill, I was trying to get ready to do some things in reference to a lot of the gun violence in our communities. Uh, I heard Mr. Ramandis in his comments, and I don't know if he knew that I was working and I've been on TV and record talking about a lot of the gun violence, and I just wanna set the record straight that, uh, I'm probably gonna be supporting this, uh, I'll, I'll take the heat for it, but as it relates right now, uh, if, if the policies, uh, when, if this is approved, come forward to make sure that we, we're not violating what civil liberties in community, especially communities of color, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of that. Uh, I think that the number of, uh, deaths that are occurring and going to these funeral homes, I tell people, I don't care if it's a police officer that shot an African-American, or another African-American shot an African-American. When somebody dies, that mother, all they care about is my baby is dead, my baby's dead, they don't care about nothing else, I gotta bury my child, I gotta get up money if I don't have insurance. There's a lot of avenues, so for me, to see those mothers, when they're crying and they're upset, we've gotta help them to save money to bury. And then we have unsolved murders that, that families that wanna know, who, what happened? And there's a tool to use that, I, I'm in favor of that, I don't believe in a no-snitch policy. Uh, I mean, I, I understand people are fearful, but if there's a tool to stop bad intentions, uh, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of making sure we're violating people's civil liberties. So, I just wanna make sure, Mr. Carlson alluded to that, that, uh, if this is awarded, we will make sure that this council meets with the chief and administration to put some, some safeguards in place so, uh, people's rights aren't violated and we're not just spying on people, I do hope so.
Mr. Chairman Charlie, again.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, thank you for the floor, I appreciate, uh, what, uh, Councilman Goots, Councilman Carlton, Councilman Vera have said, and I'll be supporting, uh, the move here to approve it, providing that all the other items that they spoke about, the safeguard of, uh, rights are not infringed.
All right, thank you very much, any other council members? All right, do we have those two public comments, uh, ready to go before, I don't wanna take action until we, we get to those items?
Mr. Chair, yes, it's actually for, um, the recordings, and I'm gonna try my best to play it from my desk, but I'm gonna start off with Fran Tate.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, council members, this is Fran Tate, I reside at thirty-four oh five Play Street, Tampa, three-three-six-oh-five. I am the president of the Jackson Heights Neighborhood Association and Crime Watch. We would like to go on the record and hold support of surveillance cameras. It is our prayer that the cameras of the county should help those individuals who seek to commit murder in our neighborhood by way of drive-by shootings. We hear constant gunshots in the community, thus causing us to live in fear day by day. So we ask at this time that surveillance cameras be positioned where they need to be, so that they may capture those individuals, thus saving the lives of innocent community members. Thank you so very much for taking my call, God bless us all, bye.
All right, thank you very much, we'll go to the next, next recording then.
Thank you, the next one is Reba Hayman.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm at two-seven North Fernandez Court in the Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-oh-three, and I'm calling in in reference to the support for Tampa Police Department, um, for the cameras and the services that they are trying to do in the area. Please, you know, that there is many, um, drive-by shooters in the area, uh, it is becoming extremely very, very, very dangerous throughout the state of Tampa. Support, and I'm wishing that the city council will, please, please, please approve the funding so Tampa Police Department can do all things necessary to get this under control. I am the neighborhood coordinator for the Robles Park area, and I support everything, yes, by doing, I agree with the Southwood trap shooting. As you know, last week, we had two additional drive-by shootings, and it continues to go on in the past, and therefore it will be in the future. So I support the two all to support Tampa Police Department in funding them, whatever things necessary needed, for them to make this, uh, continuously a safe community here in Tampa Bay area.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be Frankie Jones.
All right. Frankie Jones, my address is three-six zero-six East Tampa, three-six zero-six East Genette Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-zero. I will call in to, uh, let you know that I am in favor of the surveillance cameras. I spoke with Major Johnson, and also, um, I am very, uh, happy that we're getting, uh, our time for this, thank you very much, bye-bye.
Thank you, and our last public comment recording will be from Chloe Coney.
All right, go ahead.
Chloe Coney, twenty-three oh three Genette, uh, Drive, I'm calling concerning the cameras, uh, letting in East Tampa the last forty-seven years, uh, having families that live in East Tampa, living in the area for, uh, considering what's happening in our community now, with the drive-by shootings, uh, the violence that's happening in our community, the killing. I highly recommend that we choose those cameras in, in the community. A lot of people don't want to come forth after they have witnessed the crime, unfortunately, the blood of the victims have found out, so just, and you still put the people that are committing these crimes in jail. And they don't have to choose, but they will not commit other crimes. So I say yes to the cameras, I do not commit any crime, we have nothing to worry about, this will be fine, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, that was, that was the final recording?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, so that concludes, uh, all the public comments that we had, uh, standing by, so we'll go back to items two and three, um, where all questions answered by council members. All right, so we're gonna take a, uh, an individual, uh, roll call vote here on item number two, um, if we could, you have, do we have a motion for, uh, to move this resolution?
So moved, Councilman Goots.
Second, second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goots, thank you from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote?
Vera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Yes. Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Pedro?
Pedro votes yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
I have motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much, item number three, do we have a mo-, a motion to approve this?
So moved.
So move.
I believe I heard a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goots, roll call vote.
Yara?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Futter?
Yes.
Anas Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Citro votes yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Item number four, where, four was also called for discussion. Councilman Ding Futter, you had requested that the item be polled. Would you like to go ahead and ask any questions?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir. One second. Harder to be organized, uh, under these conditions. This was a pass-through, a pass-through item to provide the Sheriff Office with license plate readers. Again, I, I had civil liberties concerns. I had civil liberties concerns about that, about license plate readers. I took a look at Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office policy. It appears they, they hold the license tags for ninety days, which I think is a little bit excessive. So anyway, that's why I just wanted to pull it, discuss it, see if anybody else wanted to talk about it, and then bow down and step away.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions regarding item number four from council members?
Is there somebody on the line with the Sheriff Office to give us a little bit more explanation on this?
Do we have anybody on the, the chief still there, or anybody, any other representative?
Hey, this is Lieutenant Joe Mark from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. I'm available for any questions.
All right, are there any questions for the gentlemen?
Yeah, the operational use of, of these particular cameras, uh, why, why the utilization and, and also the timeframe.
I'm sorry, sir, so. I'm sorry, did I step over somebody?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Um, the license plate, the license plate readers will be used in conjunction to protect our critical infrastructure concerns, whether it be Port of Tampa, or Raymond James Stadiums, or any high-profile events. From the terrorist investigation perspective, they will be used in that manner. Additionally, with any type of other high-profile, high-profile events that we have in the Tampa Bay area, to include in the past, whether it be WrestleMania, in concert with any of those other events, to include the election season moving forward, high-profile, high-profile events to include candidate visits. And we've seen an increase in threats to places of worship, whether it be a synagogue or any other house of worship. Remember, they're mobile, so they can be deployed in any fashion or any type of threat vector that we receive.
All right. Any questions or comments for council members?
One, one follow-up question, Ding Futter, um, the, uh, the lieutenant, lieutenant, um, I, I think somebody sent me a policy, HCSO policy that spoke to retention, ninety-day retention for, for those plates. And I just thought that was a little, a little long. Is there any, is there any justification for holding it for three months after an event has come and gone?
The ninety-day retention policy is just, it allows us to, if there was a threat, sir, and there's a past threat, we can go back and see where that vehicle was in that timeframe. So not just necessarily real time, but we can go back and see where that vehicle was. Were they conducting any type of criminal activity? Were they there conducting surveillance? That's why it's there for that, that term.
All right, any other questions, sir? All right, um, seeing none, I have a motion to approve this, to move this resolution.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, and who made the second? Second to that, uh, motion?
Uh, Vera will. I, I don't know who made it, but I can.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Vera, um, roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Futter?
No.
Anas Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Uh, Madam Clerk, I just want to make sure you can hear me. I vote yes.
I can.
Thank you.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Futter voting no.
Alrighty, so, uh, Councilman Citro, this is your committee. Uh, we still have items five, six, and seven. If you'd like to make a motion to move those items?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that you can hear me.
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move items five through seven.
Do we have a second?
Second, Vera.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Vera, roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Futter?
Yes.
Anas Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, um, no, no, you're good. All right, next item, or next committee is Parks, Recreation, Cultural Committee. It's one item, item number eight. Uh, Councilman Ding Futter, you did not want to pull this for discussion, correct?
Correct, I'm good with it.
Okay, uh, Councilman, uh, Goots, if you'd like to move this item?
Let's move on to item eight, Mr. Chair.
Second, Miranda.
We have a motion, Councilman Goots, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Yara?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Futter?
Yes.
Anas Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next up is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Ding Futter has requested that all three items nine, ten, and eleven be polled. Uh, Councilman Ding Futter, if you'd like to, um, ask your questions, uh, go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, let's just start, start with item nine, which is the solid waste recycling issue that, uh, Ms. Heineken brought up at the beginning of the meeting as a public comment. Um, do we have somebody, uh, on the line from Solid Waste?
Yes, you do. This is Mark Wolf, office director for the Department of Solid Waste and Environmental Program Management.
Hey, Mark. Um, so, Mark, um, I don't know if you've heard Ms. Cross's comments early at the beginning. I know you've probably seen some of her correspondence, and maybe you've even spoken with her. Um, she raises some concerns about the recycling program generally. She raises some concerns about this specific new contract. And, um, you know, I think we all have concerns about the, the state of, of recycling. So, uh, what, what's this contract about, and how do you address her concern?
Yes, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, uh, this subject matter this afternoon. Good afternoon, council. Uh, yes, this, for this particular contract, we actually, uh, when I say staff and I, I'm sorry, just a second. Uh, we, uh, actually began researching this, um, this concern regarding the decline in recycling markets for about the last two or three years. Uh, we kept in close contact with our partners throughout the state, with other local, uh, with other regional municipalities, as they're all experiencing, uh, the same concerns regarding the state of their recycling programs. You know, having the foresight to, 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 you know, jump on this matter early. Our contract, our current contract with processing recyclable materials was actually expiring of June of twenty twenty. Uh, we began, uh, working on our agreement and, uh, preparing bids as early as June of twenty nineteen. Uh, we put out one bid, uh, and we did not get a response from anyone that was willing to support our request to process our recyclable materials. And, uh, we got feedback from those, those potential vendors. Uh, we worked with the Department of Purchasing to put out another bid with adjusted terms and conditions. And, uh, after the second round, I believe we got responses, or we, we still didn't get bids, but we got responses from two potential bidders. One of those bidders did not have a, uh, processing facility in the city of Tampa and could not meet the requirements to support our program. Uh, the other bidder, which is Waste Management, which is the, the agreement that is before you right now, uh, was willing to accept our materials, but they did have some terms and conditions as far as which materials that they no longer wanted to accept. We spent about, uh, six months, um, negotiating with Waste Management, and when I say we, that includes the Department of Solid Waste, as well as the Department of Purchasing and legal, uh, negotiating with, uh, Waste Management. And, uh, this was the best that we could do, so we all agreed to have a one-year, uh, for the one-year, uh, agreement right now, uh, with a couple of one-year renewal options on it. And we will continue, although this is not the ideal contract that we've had in the past, or what we anticipate moving, uh, moving towards in the future. We plan to revisit our opportunities to improve the materials, uh, that we accept throughout the year. So this is not the end-all, uh, of our recycling program. Uh, however, uh, we, as many other municipalities, are facing some of the challenges that, that basically is the state of the recycling program. We have to figure out a way to weather through this together. Um, again, uh, we have some of our, our area partners here in Hillsborough County. They are actually considering a regional, uh, constructing a regional processing facility, which we'll continue to have more discussions with them in the future to see if there are any opportunities for us to partner, uh, together to make that a success. But, uh, at the moment, this is the only bidder that we have in our region, um, and these are the terms and conditions that we were able to negotiate.
Mr. Wolf, um, specifically as related to cartons, I mean, I realize that the whole, the whole world is in this uh, conundrum about recycling, but specifically related to the issue of carton recycling, um, you know, the, I know in our household, we try and recycle, uh, milk cartons and other similar sort of cardboard wacky cartons. Um, what, what's the problem with Waste Management in that regard? And, uh, is that an automatic reject?
Uh, in this particular case, uh, cartons were, were never really a part of our initial collection program. Uh, however, Waste Management at one point in time, uh, agreed, you know, to accept the materials. They had actually invested in, uh, a mechanical or optical sorter that, that is designed to, uh, help, you know, basically screen that material um, and, and get it ready for processing. Uh, but our discussions with Waste Management, they said that that pro, that, uh, particular device, uh, did not support their operation or did not work well with their operation. So they have since, uh, removed the cartons, uh, from their, from their string. Uh, now also keep in mind that the cartons actually represent a small percentage of our, of our, uh, recycling string materials that we actually collect. We, uh, conduct a, a recycling audit, um, so that we can get an average of the, the composition, the weight of material that's coming through our program, and the cartons were a very small part of it.
Uh, my question, are you, are you amenable to coming back to us, let's say, nine months from now before we get too far in any renewal process and give council a verbal, not just a written update, but a verbal update um, on, you know, the status of, of, of all of this, um, assuming we move forward with today's contract?
I, I most certainly am, because I, I myself am not satisfied with it, but I recognize at this point in time, Waste Management being the only uh, processor that can meet our requests. I understand that we have to make a few concessions in order, you know, to, uh, to, to actually accomplish our main objective. So I most certainly, uh, will, will support that and, and come back and provide any updates that, uh, that are requested.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, Councilman Ding Futter, does that answer your questions for nine, ten, and eleven, or do you have any more?
No, 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 that was just nine, uh.
All right, go ahead, sir, with, uh, number ten then.
Uh, if you want, I'll go ahead and move number nine.
Second, Mr. Chairman Miranda.
A motion from Councilman Ding Futter, uh, for item number nine, the resolution, and a second from Councilman Miranda. Um, can we get a roll call vote on that?
Yara?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Futter?
Yes.
Anas Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Ding Futter.
Right, back, back again on, on ten and eleven. And I'd like to act, I, actually, I can resolve a lot of questions related to some of the other items. Is, is Mr. Baird or somebody else from Contract Administration on the line?
Uh, yes, I am, Councilman Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure.
Okay. Brad, we've worked together so long, you probably are reading my mind, but, um, item ten and eleven, the, the, um, minority, uh, WNBE minority business percentage that I'm looking at is only five percent. Item twenty-eight, which is five and a half million dollars. The, the WMBE is five percent. Now, item twenty-nine, the WMBE is five point seven percent. I, on the good side, item, item twenty-six and twenty-seven, the WMBE is, and FLB and WMBE is twelve percent. So that, that's a good number. I don't always want to sound like I'm complaining. Um, and, but anyway, the, we've got some real big-ticket items that have dropped back down to five percent. And when we passed the pipes program, we were all given assurances that when we started these real big-ticket five, ten million dollar items, that we were going to consistently, consistently see higher WMBE percentages in the, you know, in the tens and teens and the higher. It seems to be hit, kind of a little bit hit and miss, Mr. Baird, and, and I, I know everybody tries their hardest, but, but that's, that's not going to help.
Yeah, I, I, I fully understand, I, you know, items, uh, ten and eleven, for instance, we have, uh, goal, a total uh, participation of thirty-seven, over thirty-seven percent. So that's certainly, uh, something worth celebrating and are correct, items twenty-eight and twenty-nine are down in the, uh, five, uh, to six percent. Um, I would say that items twenty-eight and twenty-nine are, are both change order number three for those contracts. They both expire, um, in December. And, uh, the overall participation, I'm told by the EBO office, for that whole contract is about seventeen percent. So this is just to, um, add additional money to that contract so we can get to December twentieth. And, um, just a reminder that, um, we will continue to work with the contractor to, um, have our actual participation exceed those goals that you're reading at the bottom of the page.
Right. What, um, I mean, what, what do we have to do to get the message out to the vending community? You know, that we're serious about these, about these goals and that they need to re, you know, reach them more, more consistently. Um, and I'm not going to name names in terms of who these vendors are. Um, but, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm just sort of at a loss. You know, do we have to reject these contracts in order to, in order to get their attention, or what?
Uh, well, that's what we will do at the end, you know, um, toward December, is we, we have actually three of these contracts. One of them, one resued at, uh, Kimmons earlier this year. And these are the other two for the same type of work for the water department. Um, and then, uh, we will rebid them, uh, at that time.
And then we will rebid them at that time.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions on any of those items.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, would you recognize? I didn't pull those items because Mr. Dingfelter did put a memorandum about the items. But again, I talked about this in the beginning when we approved this type of that budget. I still don't understand why we don't have something in place and we're spending this type of money. We've asked to have something in place. So I'm going to ask again, when are we going to have a policy in place, like Mr. Dingfelter alluded to, to let these vendors know that, or making sure that we have somebody who going out doing inspection, make sure this thing is getting done? So I'm going to ask Mr. Baird again because I thought it was very, very clear that we've got to make sure that we're monitoring. So I'd like to know, what is the plan moving forward, Mr. Baird?
Yes, Councilman, thank you for bringing that up because I failed to mention it. In the larger contracts that we, that you and I talked about before are the larger design build efforts, such as items 26 and 27 with the neighborhood project is a good example. Those projects are in the initial stage of design and basis of design report. So when we get into the, you know, the starting should be in about a year and a half on some of those projects where we would start. And at that point, we will have a process in place to verify, more so than we do now, that the contractors are being used, the SLBE contractors and the WNBE contractors are actually onsite and being used. But, you know, currently we have Contract Administration Department inspectors that ensure that those contractors are there and that they're paid. And then they're reported on that DMI form through Mr. Hart's office, EBO office.
Well, I understand all of that, but, you know, you have to have oversight, you have to have somebody watching the house still. That's why I said you need to have somebody in place. You may have contract services going to inspect it, but you need to have somebody from Mr. Hart's office making sure this is done, making sure they're doing their job as well. So I'm just saying that I'm hoping that we get this corrected, I hope that we get a policy so council can see and making sure that what we've asked for is getting done because we asked for a big budget to do what the administration wants us to do to move this city. So I think it's only more than fair that we have a policy in place, we have somebody who has some oversight to make sure that these things are getting done so we don't have to ask a question, a poor items asking, why is this not done? If you can't meet the goal, you can't meet the goal. We need to look for somebody else. If there's just a situation, we just can't, and sometimes if there will be, I can understand it. But if you can't meet the goal, you can't meet the goal, let's move on and making sure we have oversight and employing somebody, I mean, or having someone else, if we have another person at office, empowering them to go and do the job. And I hope Mr. Hart's listening because this falls rightly in his category and he also should be monitoring this, making sure we have this job getting done because we promised the citizens that we will be fair and echo with the contract, especially these high-dollar contracts. So I'm hoping that you're listening again till we can get that done, Mr. Baird. And it's not to chastise you or anything like that, make sure you don't feel away. I just feel that we keep going over the same road and we need to go and pave and go on so we've got a good running road. I give it to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from any other council members?
I'd like Mr. Baird to respond, at least respond and say how, moving forward, he's going to get the counsel and bring something back so we understand that there's something in place.
All right. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
No? Go ahead, sir.
I was hoping Mr. Baird would respond to my comments.
Is that Mr. Dingfelter to respond to your comments?
Brad Baird, I was hoping he would respond to my comments.
Mr. Baird, do you have any response to our councilman?
Yes, I'm sorry, I would, yes, the Contract Administration Department and the EBO office are working together on a framework to, in response to what Councilman Goode is asking for.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelter, does this answer the question for items 10 and 11?
Yes, questions have been answered. If you want to bundle, I think 10 and 11, 10 and 11 could be bundled by somebody else's motion.
All right, if you could go ahead, it's your committee, public works, item 10 and 11, if we can get a motion to move those items?
So move, Councilman Goode.
All right, Councilman Goode, motion, do we have a second?
Viera, second.
All right, we have a second from Councilman Viera, roll call vote, please.
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
No.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelter voting no.
All right, thank you very much. We go on to Finance Committee, items 12, 13, and 14, those are Councilmember Miranda, none were hoped for discussion, so Councilman Miranda, if you'd like to move those items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move items 12 through 14, sir.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Who was the second? Viera? All right, we have motion from Councilman Miranda. All those, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Pietro.
Pietro votes yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we go to Building Zoning and Preservation, but Councilman Dingfelter pulled item number 15 for discussion. Councilman Dingfelter, you had some questions on the thought.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is the item about splitting these large, 30 of these large kiosks in the downtown area, they're like the size of refrigerators out on our sidewalks. I believe we should have somebody on the line, perhaps Mr. Bide, Vic, on the line, he can explain the city's position and then I'll explain mine.
Thank you, Councilman. Vic Bide, Director of Mobility Department. We also have Ron Wiggendon from Legal Department to chime in if needed and the Downtown Partnership as well. So a quick background on item number 15. The city has an existing services agreement with the Downtown Partnership to provide several services, including wayfinding, mobility services, like the Downtowner and all of the provided, business improvement, and these are all documented in that agreement. As part of that agreement, the Downtown Partnership, you know, reached out to the city some time back requesting that we approve or reauthorize kiosks to be, smart city kiosks to be implemented within the rights of way. The objective of these kiosks, and they're called smart city kiosks, are to provide better wayfinding, to foster smart mobility applications that basically aggregate different modes of travel. So we already have scooters on our right subway. We have the Downtowner flying downtown, we have transit, we have the water taxi, and there are applications that aggregate these things. The other thing that these kiosks also do are useful for permeating notifications that the city may want to put out there. This could be emergency notices, this could be COVID-related messages, for example, or also location of shelters during emergencies or small business promotion, which is also a big part of what the Downtown Partnership does. So we worked, you know, under that agreement with Ike, who is the Downtown Partnership's selected vendor and contractor, to come up with facilitating them in the rights of way in a safe, consistent manner for these objectives. This is not unusual, we're probably the 15th or 16th city that I know of, based on our due diligence, that has already done so. Cities our size approximately have the same level of deployment, about 30 kiosks. And some of the things we look at as part of this deployment of these kiosks are things like, are they wind rated 130 miles an hour for gale-force winds, given, you know, our conditions here in Florida? Do they provide maximum benefit for the purpose that they're built for? And I described the purpose earlier. Do they create an obstruction from a site perspective at intersection? Do they foster Vision Zero, ADA compliance, all of those specific initiatives that we have? So we've looked at all of this and we are here, you know, and this item is here to authorize the use of the rights of way for these kiosks. At this point, I'll let the line open for any questions and happy to address any questions.
Any other questions from any council members, for the gentleman?
I've got some more, but I'd like to see if anybody else has any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilman Goode.
I just want to make sure, I've had conversations with community leaders and also this particular company to make sure that, you know, if this goes through, that I always say that what other communities get, sometimes District Five does not get. So I just want to know, Vic, is there, make sure we have a plan that all communities will be able to have some type of access or this system be in place to help all communities?
That's an excellent question, Councilman, and thank you for bringing it up. So two-part answer, one, as part of our rights of way agreement, what we're saying is we'll only authorize this if up to 10% of the units or 30, three units out of the 30 are for the sole purpose of equity in certain areas like closer to opportunity. Given this is primarily a downtown deployment, that would be things like Encore, Marion Transitway, Perry Harvey Park, or any other areas within that Downtown Partnership footprint. Having said that, this agreement does not preclude us from deploying smart city kiosks anywhere else in the city. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions from council members?
Miss, oh, and Mr. Chair, this is Viera, if I may. I don't have a question for Mr. Bide, I appreciate his presentation. Are we also going to be hearing from the Downtown Partnership or anyone else, or is it just the city? I didn't, I didn't know, just for purposes of procedure.
Or are they standing, if the Downtown Partnership is standing by for questions, do any council members have any questions or concerns for the Downtown Partnership or anyone else?
I'd like to hear from them in regard to their participation and their involvement.
Sure.
wishes to speak, is that Councilman Pietro?
Dingfelter.
Councilman Dingfelter, okay. If the Downtown Partnership, which is, if you're on the line and council wishes to address them?
Yes, this is Sean Drinker with the Tampa Downtown Partnership, the Senior Director of Public Programming and Operations, glad to answer any questions and glad to be here today.
All right, are there any questions for the gentleman, from any council member?
I'll defer to Viera if he had something, otherwise I do.
Councilman Viera, would you like to go ahead and?
Thank you, no, I don't have any questions. I'll have a statement after the questions are done, but in terms of inquiries, I'll have no questions.
All right, Councilman Dingfelter, then, would you like to go ahead if you have any questions, sir?
Yes, and I missed the gentleman's last name, I heard Sean.
Drinker, Sean Drinker.
Okay, Mr. Drinker, tell me about the process, the formal process, well, let me be more specific. It appears to me in talking to Vic over and over on this issue, that the Partnership, Downtown Partnership, did no formal partnership. And I say formal in the form of a bid or an RFP to all of the possible vendors. And it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there's at least four or five different vendors around the country that are in this business in a serious way. My question is very simple, did you put out a formal RFP or a formal bid, you know, as the Partnership?
There was no formal RFP issued in looking at the different operators, the criteria that we're looking for, we did not find other ones to put together a RFP in which the criteria would meet.
And you contacted each and every one of those vendors?
We spoke to a number of those vendors at the conferences and so forth. I think there's about seven different ones that are out there specifically in reference to some of the items being touchscreen was, and the ability to interact with the kiosk was really the utmost importance relative to wayfinding. So with some of those items to consider, it definitely limited our options for different providers.
Okay, but actually, when you came back from the conferences with all the information, you didn't go any further in terms of doing an RFP or a bid, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Obviously, ever since March, the beginning of March, February, the whole world is concerned about COVID and the spread of germs. Dr. Fauci, our mayor, every public health official has been telling us to avoid touching things in public. And, you know, and when you do have to touch something in public, you need to immediately wash your hands, okay? A minute ago, you said one of the key elements of making this thing work is to touch the screen, is that correct?
Yes.
So how do we judge touching the screen with these life-threatening COVID concerns?
What we've seen with the touchscreen products throughout COVID, along with an ample number of other items that are in our public realm, cleaning them on a regular basis is a necessity. Ike is working with different in-market resources in their markets to ensure that they're disinfected on a regular basis. There is also a product coating that goes over the screen that with ordinary light, it destroys 99.9% of viral and bacteria pathogens. I'm actually familiar with this product, we've recently used it through a local supplier on a product or a project in Curtisixon Park, in which it helps eliminate those germs staying on an area. So we're all obviously very cautious and concerned of our surfaces in public spaces, but I think there's a number of items that are in place to ensure that it is minimized.
Okay, so you've got 30, potentially up to 30 of these devices spread all over downtown. And by the way, Councilman Goode, they're not going to be in East Tampa or anywhere else, not under this agreement. But anyway, you've got 30 of these devices spread all over downtown, you're not attempting to even think about convincing me that your downtown maintenance folks are going to be there vigilantly between each customer, correct?
Yes.
Not going to be cleaning these things between customers. You might clean them once a day or something like that, but you're not going to clean them between customers. them once a day or something like that, but you're not going to clean them between customers. That's, that's ludicrous. Is that correct?
That is correct, that cleaning anything between each use in the public space is, is not something that could be accomplished.
Okay, and yet, and yet, you're asking the government to put these things out there to encourage people to touch them. And I, and I'm not blaming you because in the pre-COVID environment, it might have seemed to be very reasonable. But life has changed completely in the post-COVID environment. Okay, so the next question is, has, has to do with this magical film, you know, anti-viral film that, you know, that, that we're talking about. Has this been proven as related to this COVID virus?
What we have seen from Ike, as well as the product that we've used in Curtis Hickson, the supplier has noted that with, over a duration of time, with the UV lights, it eliminates viral and bacteria pathogens on the surface versus a traditional timeframe in which they would be depleted from the surface.
How, how quickly? If, if I walk up and I've got the virus and I leave it on that screen, is it, is it killed immediately, or is it killed over a period of time after another hundred people have walked up and touched my germy fingerprints?
I'm, I'm not sure of the timeframe. And I think it is dependent on light as well.
But it's clearly dependent on time too, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. And, and have you seen this, have you seen the research to show that it has any impact on the, what is it called, COVID-19?
I have seen some basic information from the product we used in Curtis Hickson.
As related to COVID-19, because COVID-19 seems to be a whole different animal.
Right, and, and we're, we're living in a world as, as we're learning day by day. And, and I'm not aware of the current timeframe it takes for that to be removed.
Okay. Does the downtown partnership have any contractual relationship that's five years long, not, not to mention fifteen years long?
The special service district is renewed on an annual basis.
Well, I'm familiar with that. My question to you is, do you, you have subcontractors, after we renew you every year, you have subcontractors that you enter into agreements with, okay? Do you have any agreements that extend up to five years, not to mention up to fifteen years?
Not that I have to be here to renew.
Councilman, if I may, uh, the term of discussing, if, if you, if you mean the rights of way use agreement, I can speak to the term.
Okay, well, I, we can get to that, and you can offer your rebuttal at the end, Vic. Let me, let me run through some of my other que, my other questions with, with this gentleman because obviously he was the one that negotiated this deal. When you were negotiating, I was told a couple of months ago that the reason that you guys picked this is because you thought it would be the best one for downtown Tampa. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's the Ike product, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. At that time, were you aware that SPP, the Vinnick folks, were, had been moving forward in the down, in the same downtown district with a whole different company?
No, we were not informed.
Okay. And when did you become informed of that?
In, informed that SPP is working with a different vendor?
Yeah.
Today.
Okay. Well, I learned about it about two weeks ago. Um, I'm sorry that you guys were, were more out of the loop. SPP is one of the major developers in your downtown district, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Were you aware today, were you informed today that, that they have a deal where they're going to get twenty-five percent of the revenue that's generated from the advertising off of those kiosks, the, the competitors' kiosks?
I, I have not heard that from SPP or any of their contractors, no.
Okay. And when I was having a conversation with somebody early on, I think it might have been the vendor, your vendor, the ICE vendor, they indicated that they were giving you guys ten percent of the revenue, approximately ten percent, with a fixed rate, a fixed rate of X amount per machine.
We actually have an agreement on a flat fee per kiosk.
Okay.
That ensures a consistent amount of revenue on an annual basis.
Okay. Let's go to the, let's go to all kiosks, because frankly, I'm a big skeptic on all of these kiosks. I think they were relevant ten or fifteen years ago. But let me ask you this, Sean, do you have a, do you have an iPhone in your pocket?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and so do I, and so does most everybody on this phone, phone call. So this, or, or an iPhone or a smartphone? Is the, I asked this question early on, and, and I think Vic might have even answered it, or maybe the vendor answered it. I said, what information, if I'm a visitor, okay, to the city of Tampa, and I've got an iPhone or a smartphone in my pocket, isn't all of the information that's available coming out of my phone the same information that's available on that, on that kiosk? Or conversely, if, if I'm wondering where to go, what to do, what to eat, where the buses run, where the water taxi is, et cetera, et cetera, and, and I probably can go to the downtown partnership website, and it'll probably give me a huge amount of information today on my smartphone. Isn't that correct?
Uh, there's, there's a two-part answer to that. First, this offers digital wayfinding. As we have worked on wayfinding throughout downtown over the past ten to fifteen years, traditional wayfinding becomes outdated the moment that it's installed. These kiosks give you the opportunity to update wayfinding information immediately and live. So as we have a lot of.
But, but isn't the same thing true with, of your smartphone?
That is true.
I'm not talking about, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about signs up on the street. I'm talking about your, my smartphone in my pocket, I believe, is smarter and more up-to-date than these kiosks.
So in reference to the smartphones, if you have a smartphone, if you have data to supply a smartphone, if you are technologically advanced in order to use a smartphone, there is information available on those, on those phones and on those systems. That does not reach the entire public. So in order to reach the general public at a full capacity, these do give all the information, directional information, details about the businesses for the general public as a whole. A few items that come along with that is, when you are searching for information, it will provide you with the business, the small business that is within close proximity to your location. It's not ad-based or referenced to any ads that may be on a online search. It is quick to your fingertips to direct you to a downtown business, the nearest business in which you're looking for, or whatever that venue is. The interaction with the smartphone, with the kiosk, is also another great amenity in which you can then send the information you have found in the kiosk directly to your phone, giving you information for their website, for their phone number, as well as maps and directions to get to that location, if you choose to use a smartphone to continue your, your, your path to the final destination.
Okay, well, let's talk about the interaction with, with the smartphone. If I'm walking by that, that kiosk, within a hundred feet of that kiosk, it's my understanding, and this is a privacy concern I have, it's my understanding that that kiosk, if my phone is open on the Wi-Fi channel, it's my understanding that kiosk is going to connect into my, into my pocket, into my privacy without my permission. Is that correct? If my Wi-Fi is open?
The, the public Wi-Fi works like all open Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi connections.
So it's my understanding that it is going out and searching for passerbyers, okay, to specifically to connect up and to get my data and to, and to find out whatever it is that, that, that those computers want to find out about what's going on in my phone. Okay, that's my understanding of how these things work.
With Ike, and it's, it's noted in their private policy, which can be found on their website, all data that's collected is immediately deleted. And stated in their privacy policy, it notes that if they were to breach their privacy, privacy policy, they would face FCC violations.
Okay, and is that part of our contract? Is that part of your contract with them, and is that part of our contract with our, our agreement or whatever the agenda item we have here today?
It is part of the downtown partnership's contract to ensure that they follow their privacy procedures outlined in their, in their documents, yes.
So, so in other words, if the FCC changed its policy, and therefore they changed their policy, then, then we'd be totally screwed in regard to trying to enforce anything different?
Noted in their privacy policy right now, there is no personal identification information collected. They simply don't collect that information.
That's, that's where they are today. Where, where are they going to be fourteen years from now, when we still have these things out there sucking my, sucking my information and everybody else's information out of my pocket?
They cannot change, they cannot change the privacy policy without consulting with us prior.
Where is that? Where is that?
I'm sorry?
Where is that statement?
That would be a change for our contract.
Okay, and is it, is, is it a breach of the contract if they did that, or did they just have to consult you? Does it allow you, allow you and us to get out of that contract? I don't think so.
The, the partnership can, the partnership could offer or ask them to change their privacy policy if needed. That, that could be changed.
I'm, I'm, I'm almost done, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we can wrap it up.
I am, I'm trying. And, and that's one of the reasons I, I sent the memo. Okay, and, and Sean, one, one last question, just to make sure that I'm a hundred percent accurate, okay? The city has delegated this decision to the partnership, correct, in terms of the vendor selection?
The Tampa Downtown Partnership, we have an agreement for content management with Ike. So we have agreed to provide, manage, and maintain all content and operations of the kiosk. We have expressed our support in this product, being the product that we would like to see operating in Tampa.
You made, and you, and you made that selection without, without, once, once you came back from the convention, you made that selection without contacting any of the other six vendors and, and without knowing about what SPP was doing up the street with their, with their program, and also without doing an RFP or a bid. All of that's correct, right?
Three years ago, first introduced to Ike, we'd spent three years researching the industry. We have been working closely with a lot of other downtown partnerships, specifically Columbus, Cleveland, San Antonio, Denver, Baltimore, and then even in Tampa, there's been temporary installation. All of these we've interacted with and worked closely with our counterparts in other cities. We've seen.
Are they all, are they all ICE cities?
Yes. Yes, by, by, by far, we have, we have seen the implementation of Ike in, in numerous cities.
Okay. And, and as far as legal's concerned, Mr. Chairman, just one more point. I, I understand, and I've, I've had many conversations with, with everybody on this in regard to legal. You know, legal says, it's legal, it's all legal, we can delegate this to the partnership, and then they can pick somebody. And as I said in my memo, just because it's legal doesn't make it right. And one of the things, the last thing I want to say is, the last thing I want to say is, if you look at my memo, please take a close look at what the legislature says about why we do bids and RFPs. We do it for fair and open competition. We do it to reduce the appearance and opportunity of favoritism. We have one of these vendors, the SPP vendor wrote us all a letter and said, why weren't we included? Okay, the legislature has said that it's essential for the effective and ethical procurement of commodities and contractual services, that there be a system of uniform procedures to utilize at state agencies, and that includes local governments, to, to go through process. And we do process day in and day out, and for some reason, process fell by the wayside on this one. And I, I yield my time and I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Any other questions from council members?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Then Vera, if I may. Thank you.
Okay, go, yes, sir. Councilman Goo, then Vera.
Uh, we have the downtown partnership representative there. Is the ICE representative on the phone or with the downtown partnership this time?
Is the representative from ICE or ICE on the phone?
Uh, no, they're not. We, we had limited, uh, time, so.
Okay.
Uh, let, let me just make this comment publicly. I, I know Ike has come around, and Mr. Dinkford made a statement from the contract about other areas, and Vic says that that is a process. But I'm just trying to figure out what is that process and to make sure that, you know, when, when people tell me things, I believe what they tell me. And, and when they go around, they tell my community certain things that, that we're going to be able to be a part of this pilot program, a part of this program. I just want to hear again from Vic, is, is that true, is that not true? Because I mean, that, that really brings my support when we're talking about procurement. So I just want to make sure that we're on this all in the same page. Have you heard that, Vic, that, that they would, they would be a provider and help our, our other communities, especially East Tampa, in reference to this program?
So, Councilman, to that question, that is there a provider that will install kiosks in other areas within the city?
No, I didn't ask for, no, Vic, I didn't ask for a provider. What I asked was, this particular group, Ike, has met with several of my, my community leaders, saying that if this program is implemented, that it, they, they're, they're going to be throughout the city, and my community would get one. So have you heard that? Have they had that kind of conversation with you?
Yes, yes. So that was the condition that we mentioned, that ten percent of their deployment has to be for equity purposes. What those areas are, are not, you know, specifically defined, but the way we control or have control over it is we provide the rights of way use permit to install these signs on a sign-by-sign location. That's why this is a rights-of-way agreement. So if they're not exercising that ten percent for those purposes, then they don't get a permit.
And Vic, let's be straight up, the downtown partnership boundary topped right above the interstate, okay? At Encore is as far north as, as far north as you're going. So the three boxes you're talking about that they might put in in the quote equity areas might be at the bus station, they might be at Encore, and you mentioned a third place. And that's all fine and good, but it's not stretching beyond the bounds of the downtown partnership. So let's be abundantly clear of what you're saying.
Yes, that, that is correct, that this is within the downtown partnership area, that the thirty kiosks will be installed, and the ten percent three would be within this boundary or this area. What this contract is not about is any other area within the city, so it doesn't preclude us from looking at those type of solutions elsewhere.
See, that was not indicated to me when I've been having, when, when these folks were having meetings with my community and telling me one thing, and now you're telling me a total different opposite of what I've been told. I was told, we have a central area at Twenty Second Hills Revival, identify some other areas. But now I'm being told that that, that this is not going to stretch nowhere near that. It will only be down to the lower end, was not, will, will not touch the main core of, of, of the east side of town.
This is Sean with the downtown partnership. If I could speak briefly on that topic.
All right, go ahead.
And, and Vic, I would defer my, this is really a question back to you. Is my understanding that, um, that we amended the agreement to ensure that the ten percent could move into East Tampa in the community where the residents were, were reached out to, and not just within the district, that those could in fact go into East Tampa? not just within the district, that those could in fact go into East Tampa?
Hello, this is Ron Wigginton with the legal department. I have a representative from Ike, Jabran Sher Mohamad, that's available to speak.
All right, if we could bring the representative from Ike and then bring this in for a landing and wrap up this item. Go ahead, Jabran from Ike.
Thank you, councilman. This is Jabran Sher Mohamad. And, and Councilman Gutz, to, I apologize for the, for any confusion that may have occurred earlier, but just to clarify the point, this right of way maintenance agreement allows us to install the kiosk throughout the city. In the downtown Tampa partnership agreement, we have, we have an amendment to that agreement per the discussion we've had earlier, that these kiosks will be installed in East Tampa. And then per the discussion, discussion you and I had a few weeks ago, the, we're going to partner with the local organization as determined through a coalition of local groups in East Tampa to see who would take the place of the downtown partnership in terms of receiving the revenue from the kiosk. But we are committed in Longham and East Tampa, this right of way maintenance agreement, as I understand it, permits installation in East Tampa, and we have an amendment in place with the downtown Tampa partnership that requires us to be installed there. So we, we, we are prepared to install in East Tampa and are committed to it.
Vic, is that correct?
So, my apologies, councilman, I wasn't aware of the amendment between the downtown partnership and Ike. Again, our, our lens here was, you know, installation in the rights of way, but if this does allow that amendment, if it does allow for installation in East Tampa, we'd be more than happy to support and see that through.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
All right.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, for your time. Thanks for logging in and whatnot. Is there anything else before we bring this up for a vote?
Vera, I wanted to speak.
Vera. Go ahead, sir. Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. A lot of comments on this here today, I just wanted to just make some observations, I don't have any questions. With regards to this issue, I read Councilman Dingfelder's, I'll, I'll call it a memo of law, I say that jokingly, I respect the effort, I respect the voice making that effort that took a lot of time, I, I, I read through it, et cetera, because of the time it would take to do that. That being said, I'll be supporting this. I, I also saw a letter, I believe it was from a competitor on this, we're voting on a right of way here. We heard a lot of different things about these machines from being outdated to, if I heard correct, being perpetrators of data theft and perpetrators of, of spreading COVID, and, and now we're saying, okay, well, they're, they're not gonna be in East Tampa. Well, I think they are gonna be in East Tampa from what I hear, but my point is, if these are machines that steal data and spread COVID, then why would we want them in East Tampa? In other words, there's a lot of conflicting things here with, with regards to the germs issues. I mean, just some basic thoughts on that. I mean, if we take that rationale for not putting any kind of a machine or device that would have, you know, I guess, public touching, I guess, if you will, we recently approved maybe one or two banks in the city of Tampa. That requires ATMs, that would mean Redbox machines, Coke machines, candy machines, scooters, our, our Tampa City Council, what we call the Kapeen machine, the, the coffee machine, we all have a duty of self care. And from what I've read with the CDC, the best way or the most potentially adverse way to spread COVID is from person to person contact. You can get it potentially by touching a surface and then touching your face, et cetera, but it's typically person to person and people have a duty of self care that I certainly hope every person after 140,000 deaths nationally in our country have that. I don't see a reason to deny this. I think that some of the issues that have been brought up, I appreciate the hard work, I appreciate the passion, I appreciate the time, but I don't see a reason to deny this. Just wanted to give my, my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other council members that have not spoken wish to speak on this? All right, hearing none, just, you know, my, my quick opinion, I, I was first exposed to the, this product by Ike right when Hurricane Irma was coming through. I saw it on display and I know that on Jackson Street across from City Hall at One Tampa City Center, right outside, there was a demonstration one day, and basically it's a, it's a large iPhone, but it's very interesting, this is the future, I mean, it's something completely different. You know, we went from Rolodexes and phone books to storing phone numbers in our phones and whatnot, and, you know, a lot of things have become obsolete. So this is technology, this is something that I think would be helpful to people that are getting around, visitors, information, whatever it is, because it's what you get on your smartphone, nearest restaurant, gas station, weather, whatever it is, you would get on something like this. So I'm supportive, I've seen this in person, I, I've, I've used it myself, again, there was, it was on display right there on Jackson across from City Hall, maybe two years ago or so, so I've always been supportive of this product, I think would be a, a nice addition. So having said that, can we get a motion to move this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question before your motion.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir, this is the last one.
Okay, the, actually, it's a comment back to, to Mr. Vera, and Mr. Vera, I appreciate your, your compliments about the memo, but specifically when we approved banks and ATMs, and I can't remember what other examples you gave, various other machines on private property operated by private companies, okay, that's the distinguishing factor, all right? This is a machine, on the one hand, we're spending millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars to prevent and mitigate the spread of COVID. And then we are on the verge today of approving putting out 30 machines that invite the public to touch and to spread COVID and, and for 15 years, for 15 years. We don't do anything for 15 years. I could get Mr. Baird back on the, on the phone and ask him, you know, Brad Baird, do we enter into any contracts with any vendor for 15 years? Even, not even five years? We don't even do it for five years. But would, we do it for 15 years here, okay? And then finally, to all of you, and this has, this offended me the most, okay, is the lack of process. I might have an opinion about whether or not these machines are, are great or not, Mr. Chairman, and I respect what you're saying, and you're gonna be around a lot longer than I am, but process is something we can all relate to, because we demand it in every single circumstance on every single agenda item. If, if Brad Baird walked up one day and he said, I really like this road builder, okay, and, and I've done all the research and you need to trust me on that, unless, you know, unless they enter into a contract or an agreement, or whatever you want to call it, based on that, we would say, no, sir, you go back and do the process. Charlie Miranda, you talk about trust and verify, okay, when they talk about these privacy issues, okay, I don't trust or verify them or anybody else when it comes to the invasion in my cell phone when I walk by one of these machines. This is our responsibility to regulate our right of way and there's no justification to do it without process whatsoever. So anyway, I appreciate all y'all listening to me, I appreciate you reading the memo, and yes, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion to move this resolution.
Charlie Miranda, I haven't spoken. I'm mad, may I say something? I, I just noticed all these things and, you know, I'm, I'm not on one side or the other side, I'm looking at around and I tell myself, all the things we're saying about the machines where you get your money from and this, that and the other, ITMs or whatever, own city property or private property, then I look out the side of my window and I see the parking area where you gotta go get your tickets at a city machine, everybody touches, everybody they, I can't be 100% saving the world. The world's gotta take care of itself somewhere in line. I, I can't, I can't raise any more children, I only had three. And what I'm trying to say is, somebody's gotta take responsibility for their own actions. I cannot, and I'm not trying to be in any way insulting anybody, but I cannot sit here and see that I, I can't save anybody from themselves, that's what I'm trying to say. So where are we going with this? I never heard of a contract 15 years, I agree with that, but I don't know if they say how it's safe and how it's not safe and why contract for 15 years or five years? I don't understand it, I don't understand all of it. I, I'm here, I understand the need for it, I, I just don't understand where we're going with talking about saving the world. I cannot save the world, I admit it, and I'm not the President of the United States of America either. I don't try to save the world by saying things I didn't say and say things I thought I said. That's how I am, but I'm not the smartest individual in the world either. So that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro, did you have any comments, sir? I heard your, your voice.
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve this.
All right, Councilman Citro has made the motion to move this resolution, do we have a second?
Vera, a second.
We have a second from Councilman Vera, let's take a roll call vote.
Vera?
Yep.
Gutz?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Yes or no?
I said no, thank you.
Thank you. Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfutter voting no.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have items 16 and 17, which are part of Councilman Carlson's committee. Councilman Carlson, would you like to make a motion to move those two items? Councilman Carlson?
Yes, sorry, um, yeah, I'd like to move items 16 and 17.
Carlson and a Councilman Miranda, Miranda, all, roll call, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Gutz?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the Transportation Committee, but item number 18, per request of Councilman Dingfelder, has been pulled for discussion. Just a reminder, I, we have staff on the line and they're, they're on a, they're on a time schedule, so if, you know, we just keep, keep the agenda going. So Councilman Dingfelder, for item number 18, go ahead, sir.
But very quickly, Brad is item 18, also in the 5% Wemby range.
Mr. Baird?
Yes, Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator. I did pull the information on that item, I apologize.
Yeah, see if I can find it. I thought, I thought it was in that Dingfutter, that whole briefing.
All right, well, Councilman Dingfelder is looking for that. Councilman Vera, this is your committee, would you like to make a motion to move item number 19?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so moved.
Second on item 19, Miranda.
Councilman Vera has made the motion to move item number 19, with Councilman Miranda as a second, roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Gutz?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, Councilman Dingfelder, did you find the information you were looking for?
No, I did not. I don't know if Mr. Baird had better luck than I did on item 18.
Mr. Baird, were you able to find that information?
I was not.
Okay, well, we can, if, Councilman Dingfelder, if you'd like to just put a hold on this one and we'll just keep moving through the agenda until-
Well, I can, I can find it.
Okay, all right, so we go to items 20 through 24 that are items that need to be set for public hearings. Can I get a motion to that effect to move items-
Chairman, Charlie, move item 20 through 24 for the set date-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, we, we have a couple of issues. This is Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney, I'm sorry to interrupt, but item 21 through 24 were put on the agenda with a 10:30 a.m. time, but since you have now made the decision to move all your quasi judicial hearings, those need to be scheduled for an evening hearing, and that is going to be addressed by LaShawn Doc when we get to items 31 and 32. And in addition, go ahead, Susan Johnson Velez wanted to add something.
Yes, thank you, Susan Johnson Velez, Assistant City Attorney. On item number 24, there was a memo that I sent requesting a change in the date for the public hearing from August 20th to August 27th, and that is to allow the applicant sufficient time to satisfy the notice requirement, 30 day notice requirement. And also, number 20, there was a substitute resolution that provided new hearing dates as well of August 20th, 20, 20 and September 10th, 20, 20 at 6 p.m. for the same reason, in order to allow the developer sufficient time to publish newspaper notice.
Mr. Chairman, as Martin Shelby may I make a suggestion?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
If you can take number 20 and move the substitute resolution, hold 21, 22, 23, and then take 24 separately, amending it to August 27th?
Yes, sir, so, Councilman Miranda, would you like to move item number 20 to set that one individually for the public?
I move that one, item number 20, but at what time?
The date-
Do you need, do you need 9:30 or which one?
No, Susan Johnson Velez.
On the agenda-
Susan Johnson-
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Susan.
Yes, Susan Johnson Velez, Assistant City Attorney. So on your agenda, there is a substitute resolution that requests hearing dates of August 20th, 20, 20 at 6 p.m. and September 10th, 20, 20 at 6 p.m., and so we would request your approval of those two hearing dates.
All right, thank you very much. Chairman, as I understand it now, move item 20 for first hearing to be on 8:20 at 6 p.m. and, and the second hearing on September 10th of the year 20, 20 at 6 p.m.
All right.
Citro, seconds.
Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. All those in favor, we'll do a roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Gutz? Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, now we have item 21, 23 and 4, correct, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, and I'm, I'm asking that you hold 21, 22, 23 till we talk about the rescheduling at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
And then take up 24 with-
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready on 18, if you are.
All right, so in the meantime, we'll go back to item number 18, Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the confusion. Item 18 had nothing to do with Mr. Baird and I apologize to him. This is actually, because they, everything got shuffled around, this is actually an item for the streetcar extension and modernization feasibility study. It's an amendment number two to the original agreement with the vendor, H, I think it's HDR, yeah, HDR Engineering. Is Mr. Bida still on the line?
Yes, Councilman, I'm on the line.
Okay, this, I think this is your item in your world in terms of the streetcar extension. The reason I pulled this, Vic, was, I'm, I've been a huge supporter of the streetcar and the streetcar extension for more than a decade or two, and I still am, but I, recently, there's been discussion about the elimination of the historic streetcars and, and to only bring them out, you know, on special days for Ebor City, and that, that disturbs me greatly. And my request, I'm willing to vote for this, this item, because I want the, I want the feasibility study to go forward so we can get the federal money, et cetera, et cetera, but, but my request is that the, that I hope that the department and the engineer is looking to see how we might be able to feasibly run the historic cars in Ebor City and perhaps on the other end of the system as it goes downtown and or up into Tampa Heights or what have you, wherever we're going, that we use, you know, we, we use the modern cars. Now, I don't know logistically how we do that, but I do know that there's very, very strong feeling, including my own, that the, the people who- that the, the people who first put together the historic, uh, the system, put, you know, did it with the historic cars for a very specific reason. And I believe there's a community attachment to those historic cars. So, there you go.
Thank you, Councilman, and yes, I, I hear you, and we will certainly consider, uh, the operation of the historic streetcar.
Well, so, will you, will you, will you report back at different, at different phases, or how, how, you know, I mean, just to say you'll consider it? I don't, I don't know where that leaves.
Sorry, so, so let me clarify, that it was envisioned that, you know, after, uh, full modernization and extension, uh, we would still have the ability to operate the historic streetcar. Now, you are correct, uh, it, it was discussed that, you know, this would be on weekends or special occasions. But the bigger point there is that it wouldn't preclude the streetcar from operating on a modernized track. And that is a consideration that I make. We, we'll work with our consultants, we'll have to consult with Hart as well. Uh, and, and, and I'd like to say that that would be a welcome problem to have, uh, where we know that we're modernizing and extending and getting those funds, and, uh, uh, making sure that the historic streetcar also runs routes. But we'd have to consult with Hart on that, uh, and, and we'll definitely report back on it, uh, you know, as we move along the FTA process.
Okay, well, I might be a lone voice on other issues, but I can't help but think that there's other council members on this call who feel very, very strongly about historic streetcars, and maybe you need to chime in at this time, so the department knows we're serious about it.
About expanding the, uh, streetcar and the modernization?
No, about preserving and continuing to utilize the historic cars.
Uh, well, I mean, uh, be, I, I know I should, uh, speak last, but on the streetcar, um, you know, I love history. People, people that I'm friends with, they know that I appreciate Tampa history. To me, it's like a, um, it's like a treasure hunt when you go and, and learn about something new. Um, I often say that I wish I was born fifty, sixty years earlier, and, um, you know, witnessed what a lot of people that I look up to and respect and admire. It's, um, conversations I've had with, uh, with, um, Mayor Dick Greco, with, uh, other individuals from that generation and before, and their memories of the streetcar, how it was, um, you know, an effective use of, of transportation. You know, you didn't have the automobile ownership as you did post-World War II. Um, you know, going from Ballast Point to Tampa Heights to Ebor City to West Tampa. You know, the streetcar served from Sulphur Springs all the way down south, um, and, and, you know, I, I love the fact that, you know, although, you know, modernization and whatnot, um, is, is something that comes up, and of course, in this discussion here, but people love the vintage and, and antique look of the streetcar. Um, you know, I think that's what gives the character. I know that a lot of money was spent in making sure that those streetcars were recreated in a way that they reflected those of the past. Um, and that's it. I mean, I appreciate the streetcar as much as I appreciate, uh, brick streets throughout the community, and, and I've always been an advocate to pres- preserve streets, or re-brick streets, or restore streets, which I know is very costly, but, you know, in a perfect world, um, those are, those are my thoughts on, on the streetcar. I'm a history nerd, so this is, you know, my, uh, one of my favorite topics is anything like this, especially Tampa history. Uh, is there any other, uh, any other council members? Councilman Carlson?
This is Carlson. Uh, you know, um, Mr. Dingfeller, my, um, my new office is right next to one of the trolley stops, or streetcar stops, and then, and then the other office is, is next to one of them. And so I, 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 I would like this to be a viable transportation alternative. I love the way it looks. In fact, I was just talking to a photographer yesterday, or two days ago at my office, about taking a picture of the front of my office with two streetcars passing at the same time, because I think it's cool, it's beautiful, it's historic. The problem is that they're really slow, it takes forever to get from one place to another, and we need it to be a viable transportation option. So I would just ask that transportation, or whoever's doing the study, if it's possible to keep one or two of the historic ones, so that we can have them and take pictures of them. I would love to have that. Um, in, in the meantime, uh, we need something that's tasteful-looking, that goes faster, so that we can use it as a viable, uh, transportation solution. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, is this Councilman Citro?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Councilman Dingfeller, uh, un- until, until, uh, the streetcar serves a greater number of people in this city, i.e., crosses the Hillsborough River and goes into West Tampa, I will support you on this. Um, or until the streetcar goes into a continuous loop. I feel like you do, I feel that our history is with the, uh, the older type streetcars. Uh, they're comfortable, they're air-conditioned, they suit the purpose for now, until we cross the river or go into a continuous loop. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Vera, if I, if, and if I may, Vera, no, I, I'm obviously in full agreement with, uh, Councilman Dingfeller and the, uh, uh, previously mentioned, uh, uh, statements on keeping the classical or traditional, uh, streetcar, utilizing it effectively, obvious in a hundred percent agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other council members? No? All right, Councilman Dingfeller, does that, uh, answer your questions, sir?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'll be glad to move the item, and I think, uh, Vic has heard us loud and clear.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfeller for item number eighteen. Do we have a second?
Vera, second.
Thank you from Councilman Vera. Roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfeller?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we are gonna wait to set those remaining public hearings at the end. So we now go to item number twenty-five, these are second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Martin Shelby, could we go back? I just wanna be clear, we did complete number twenty, is that correct? I believe it was Mr. Miranda's vote, there was a vote on that, is that correct?
We did a separate individual vote on that, and then we're gonna hold off on, until the end. Yes, sir.
Okay, but we can take up twenty-four now.
We can take up item number twenty-four. Remember, we didn't do one, two, and three, so those are gonna be held.
Yes.
Item twenty-four, then.
And again, a council, that is to be rescheduled, or scheduled on August twenty-seventh at six p.m.
All right, can we get a motion to that effect, August twenty-seventh?
Miranda, make a motion, item twenty-seven, uh, eight, twenty-seven, twenty, at six p.m.
Motion for Councilman Miranda on item number twenty-four, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from Councilman Goode, uh, roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfeller?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to item number twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Shelby, just for clarification, um, because it says it's under public hearing, do we have to, uh, open the hearing, do anything, because this is virtual, or are those rules suspended for this, and just read the substitute?
Well, normal, normally you would, but I believe there are issues with number twenty-five that staff needs to address.
Okay, if we can have staff... Kate Wells, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Kate Wells, she's Assistant City Attorney. Item twenty-five is gonna be addressed, uh, under item thirty-one, so if you could defer a vote on that until, um, after staff's presentation.
All right, we'll leave that under thirty-one. We are moving on to item number twenty-six. Do we have anybody here for item number twenty-six?
I don't have thirty-one.
It's on the agenda. Uh, Councilman Miranda was sent out, um, about thirty minutes before this meeting began.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it, it, it will appear, um, item number thirty-one, on the final agenda, is, um, regarding the quasi-judicial hearings and whatnot. So that, that will come up in the discussion, so. Item number twenty-six, is there anybody here for item number twenty-six? I see a memo for Brad Baird. Um, are any, any questions from council members, any discussion or concerns? No, hearing none. Um, may I have a motion to move this resolution?
So move on item number twenty, Chairman.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second, I believe, from Councilmember Goode. If we could get a roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfeller?
Uh, yes, and just for clarification, this is a twelve percent WMBE item, so I'm in favor of it.
Very good.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, item number twelve, twenty-seven goes along with item number twenty-six. Again, there was a memo from Brad Baird. Are there any questions from council members regarding this? Again, as part of item number twenty-six. Hearing none, do I have to approve or move this resolution?
Miranda moves it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second, second from Councilmember Goode, if we could get a roll call vote on this.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Uh, Dingfeller?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. The next item we have is item number twenty-eight. It was pulled for discussion by Councilman Dingfeller. Um, I do see a memo here from, um, Mr. Brad Baird. Councilman Dingfeller, if you'd like to kick it off with, uh, any questions or concerns you may have?
Sure, this goes to the early discussion. We can, we can vote on twenty-eight and twenty-nine together if you wish. Again, I'm gonna vote no, because both of these are in the five percent range for the WMBE. If I'm wrong, Mr. Baird is welcome to correct me.
Mr. Baird, uh, any questions, discussion, comment?
Uh, Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator, that is correct.
All right, um, Councilman Dingfeller, any questions, anything else?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Item number twenty-eight, um, if we could have a motion to move this resolution?
So move, Vera.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, do we have a second?
Second, Miranda.
And we have a second from Councilman Miranda, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
No? Can I verify, and Goode, is that what, uh, no?
No, no, no.
Dingfeller?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
I'm showing motion carried with Goode and Dingfeller voting no.
All right, next up is item number twenty-nine, which was pulled for discussion. Councilman Dingfeller, you said that you had no questions on that one, correct?
Uh, correct, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, uh, are in the same, same category, five percent, and I think Mr. Baird confirmed that.
Okay, very good. Do we have, um, a, any other questions from council members? Hearing none, if we can get a motion to, uh, move this resolution, do we have a motion to move it?
Vera, yes.
All right, we, do we have a, we have a motion from Councilman Vera, do we have a second?
Miranda, second.
Second.
All right, we have a, uh, motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor, uh, roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Dingfeller?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode and Dingfeller voting no.
Mr. Chair, can I say one thing?
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I've talked about, um, inclusiveness in, in purchasing also, and I agree with, uh, my colleagues, uh, who are, um, voting no on these projects. Um, I'm not voting no yet, but I'm asking, uh, one more time for, uh, staff to please, uh, try to hit those higher numbers or percentages. Um, i- if not, at the next meeting, sometime soon, I'll be joining my colleagues in voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, uh, we go on to item number thirty, which is, um, regarding, uh, domain homes in the CDC of Tampa. I believe a memo was sent out that this be, um, that this be continued to a, uh, a later date, if that is correct. The motion here is, um, made by Councilmember Goode, Councilman...
Yes, sir, uh, I don't know how much time I need, apparently, uh, it's a question of fact, but I can give them at least one. Uh, I don't have a calendar in front of me, let me find his calendar here.
August to September, sir, this is Martin Shelby.
All right, uh, Councilman Goode, I'm pulling up the calendar here. Um, we have, um, we have our next council...
Ms. Carol?
...regular meeting, August sixth, um, or we have a workshop on...
Ms. Carol, uh, excuse me, the chair, Ms. Carol Post on the line, or Vanessa on the line?
Do we have, uh, Ms. Post or Ms., um, McClary on the, on the line?
Chair, Ms. Carol Post was on the line earlier, but she had to leave early.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're going...
September third is a regular meeting, um, September seventeenth, or August sixth, um...
Let's go September third, so we'll give them a month, September third will be fine.
All right, so we have a motion to continue this item, item number thirty, to September third, under staff reports. Do we have a second to this motion?
Second, Miranda, second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, um, roll call vote, please, all those in favor.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Here.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, um, item number third, uh, thirty-one here, we have, um, uh, Ms. LaShawn Doc, this is to, uh...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. I just needed to make a few clarifying remarks regarding thirty-one and thirty-two, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I just wanted to clarify a few things, both for the members of council and for members of the public who may be listening in. Your motion at number thirty-one refers to the city utilizing the, quote, Hillsborough County Commissioners, close quote, hybrid model of meeting. But I just wanted to make clear, um, first of all, the Hillsborough County Commissioners don't conduct quasi-judicial hearings in the same manner that you do, and the county, a single hearing officer conducts the equivalent of your Thursday night evening meetings. And then the county commissioners themselves, um, basically either approve things on consent, or in very limited circumstances, under more limited conditions than your second reading, um, have land-use public hearings based on that hearing officer's recommendation. Um, also, it's important to note, this Hillsborough County model has not yet been tested. We just want everyone to understand that. Hillsborough County actually hasn't had a land-use hearing officer or zoning hearing, master hearing since February. Um, they do have a plan, they did develop a plan for going forward, which we are trying to follow, as we'll explain in a minute. But again, they have not yet had a meeting using this model. Uh, they canceled their July meetings and are now planning to go forward in August. But again, we are proceeding, the staff has been working very hard the last few days to, um, proceed in accordance with your motion. But we just feel that it's important for both you and the public that we make clear that the use of the word hybrid for this model is somewhat misleading. Because became, based on the significant health concerns that you expressed... Because beca- based on the significant health concerns that you expressed, these meetings really going forward will be virtual meetings. No members of council will be present in a physical location. City planning and development staff will not be physically present. Planning commission staff and the city attorneys will also not be physically present. Will all be participating using, um, communications media technology or virtually. And finally, the purpose of using this model, again, is to protect the health and safety. Um, all, we're also asking that all land use applicant teams and members of the public participate virtually. And we're in the process of preparing notice, um, instructions and very detailed instructions explaining how they can participate. The only in-person option, um, is for those, very few individuals who may not have access to a communications media device that would allow them to participate virtually. For example, a tablet or a computer with both a camera and a microphone. So the city will be providing a spot at the convention center where those individuals will be able to use technology that will be provided by the city. And I would note that we're required to do that by state statute and the governor's emergency order because we're conducting your meeting virtually going forward. But we want to emphasize that last point because we've already received a request from a local land use attorney, asking whether she can continue to go to the convention center and use the podium, the overhead projector, and the other city equipment that has been set up there in order to make presentations at your upcoming land use meetings. And we want to remind everyone that the reason the city council opted to cancel the in-person meetings there and instead use a virtual format is because of your concerns for health and safety. And we're sure that you, council members, don't want to jeopardize the health of the city staff and the convention center staff by requiring them to facilitate the use of the convention center for anyone other than those who have no other means to participate in the meetings. So again, I just wanted to make it clear that this model you've, you've asked us to move forward with does not create an open option for participants to appear in person at the convention center, again, because of the manpower issues and the health concerns for the city staff, except, again, in that very limited circumstance where that is the only way that a person can participate in the virtual format. So, thank you for letting me explain that.
Mr. Chairman, as the maker of the motion, thank you.
Of course.
Oh, this is Shawn, this is Shawn Dean Felder. As the maker of the motion on Tuesday, that I believe deceived unanimous consent, and this, Ms. Zelman, I appreciate your classification. I think that, I think you are absolutely 100% right on. This council voted on Tuesday to mandate the safest possible way to go forward. And if we want to call that virtual instead of hybrid, that's fine, because that's just semantics. But the bottom line is, we want to protect everybody, everybody possible. And then if there's some person out there who doesn't have the ability to hook up, but they still need the due process, then we'll set up a little station at the convention center or wherever else you want to set it, set it up, because that's important. Due process is critical. We'll set that up for that one or two people who might not have a phone or, or a computer. But other than that, okay, other than that, this is the way we can move forward, doing the, doing the petitions. As Joe Pedro said, we need to move forward with these petitions. This motion did exactly that, it moves forward in a virtual way. So I, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this and all the work that will go into it, and I believe we can get there safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Dean Felder. Are there any other comments from any other council members or questions, any discussion at this point? No. All right, um, so that would conclude those last two items there, I believe, uh.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kate Wells. That actually was just, uh, a request for comment by Ms. Zelman. Uh, LaShawn Doc and Dennis Fernandez are prepared to address, um, those two items with the proposed schedule, um, for the quasi judicial hearings moving forward.
All right, go ahead, um, whoever likes to proceed, go ahead.
Good afternoon, this is Dennis Fernandez, the interim director for planning and development. As Ms. Zelman had said, we have been working on, uh, the format to be able to deliver on the virtual meetings, uh, dealing with quasi judicial matters. Uh, we've met internally with, uh, the different divisions that are impacted by this, including the city clerk's office, legal department, TNI, and planning and development. Uh, what we've got for you today is a proposed schedule to accommodate, uh, the July 16th canceled public hearing in addition to other, um, hearings that could be impacted by the conversion to a virtual model. Um, with me is LaShawn Doc, the planning and development coordinator, who's got some, uh, visuals for you, uh, to begin the discussion and hopefully be able to finalize a calendar for you.
Um, yes, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman and council members, LaShawn Doc, planning, design, and development coordination. And, um, if I can have the next slide, please? And counsel, I'd like to present to you today the, um, schedule, the revised schedule that is proposed, um, for your consideration. Um, one thing I'd like to mention, um, if I can have the next slide, please? You should have the PowerPoint in front of you.
Yep.
I think we're working on it now. But there are a couple of things, counsel, that I just wanted to mention that we took into consideration in, um, setting this schedule while we're working on the slide coming up. One thing that we did was we looked at the, um, schedule and we tried to make every effort just to have, avoid having the applicants have the requirement to do notice again. Um, one of the things you're going to see on the schedule that, um, we are proposing, you'll see that we're requesting that, um, you would convene on July 30th. That would be the next set of hearings that are coming forward, um, that you'd convene and continue those cases to August 17th. Um, given the virtual platform for the meetings, um, that has been determined, thank you for the slide. So you can see on this slide, um, if you could go back a slide? Please? Yes, here we go, thank you. Back again, so, it's slide number two. So you can, um, while we're still pulling up that slide. On the cases that are scheduled for July 30th, we're asking that those cases, um, be continued to August 17th. There's, there we go, thank you. And, um, okay, the presentation is caught up. So this is the slide that I'm speaking to now, um, if you wanted to reference it, council members and for the public. Um, so we're asking that the cases be continued to August 17th. Given the virtual platform for the meetings moving forward, um, staff felt that, um, we needed additional time to prepare, um, just to make sure that all necessary staff and departments that will participate in these hearings, um, would be ready for the virtual meeting. So there are the logistics involved with equipment, with training, um, staff, um, and also the public and applicants. So, this is the reason we just wanted to be able to move ahead and just state that we would go ahead and schedule these July 30th cases to August 17th. And I'll show you that shortly on the, um, calendar. Um, also, the next thing to point out is that, um, due to the 30-day notice requirements, the week of September 14th is the first week available to reschedule rezoning hearing. And that's from the July 16th, um, meeting. So if the city council is willing to have two consecutive night meetings that week, that's the week of September 14th, then the rezoning hearings that are proposed for September 28th that I'll show you, um, in a moment on the calendar, they may be moved up. And they could either be heard on, on September 15th or September 17th. And.
LaShawn, can I, can I speak to that for just a minute? Because I want to bring that to council's attention.
Go ahead, yes.
When we, when, when, when I was, had an opportunity to review this with staff, uh, we looked at the 28th, because I want you to pay close attention to the week of the 17th. And we can go to that slide when we get to it, um, sort of the week of the 15th. Because of the fact that that is on the Wednesday, the 16th, you have the second reading for the budget hearings. And then the next morning, you have a council meeting. So if you schedule a third, um, meeting either on the 15th, it'll be the day before your budget hearings or the night before your budget hearings. Or if you schedule on the 17th, you will have three that, that week, um, the budget hearing on the 16th, the next morning at 9:00, and then the next morning it's, uh, on the 17th at 6:00. So I, I, I recommend the original proposal, uh, as submitted by staff.
Okay. Comments on that? Any council members want to climb in on that, on the proposed, uh, schedule from staff?
Well, I still have, um, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
LaShawn Doc, okay, LaShawn Doc, um, planning, design, and development coordination. So I have a couple more slides to show, but, um, yes, um, Martin Shelby is correct. If you were to have the hearing on, on that week, on the 15th or the 17th, you would end up with the two night meetings plus the day meeting. We received a direction just to move forward, um, with an aggressive schedule, so we just wanted to have that option out there for you. Um, but we can certainly discuss what council prefers when looking at the calendar. So if I can have the next slide, please? What staff is proposing is on the review hearings that were scheduled, and these are all of the cases for July 16th. If I can have the next slide, please? Next slide, please? On the, uh, thank you, on the review hearings that were scheduled on July 16th, we had a total of, um, we have a total of 14 applications that were requesting to move to September 21st. That includes the review hearings that were scheduled on July 16th. So what we did was we looked at all of the review hearings that are, that would have been scheduled out on the calendar, um, through September 17th, and we put them all on to September 21st at 5:00 PM. One thing you'll notice on the calendar is that the night meetings, we have a start time of 5:00 PM, just because of the virtual nature of the meeting. We just felt that 5:00 PM would give an hour start earlier than the normal 6:00 o'clock. With the exception of the night that the comp plan amendments will be heard, because those must be heard at 5:01 PM. So you'll notice that 5:00 PM start date. Um, the next item that we're suggesting to move all of the quasi judicial hearings, requesting to move those to August 27th at 5:00 PM. That includes your second reading for your rezoning, and then the Rocky Point Development Agreement, and then a public hearing for MOLI. The second reading, um, for the rezonings, although we have that number of items, staff had discussed it, and we figured that second readings are relatively quick in nature. So, we just felt it just would not create an, an extra long night for council. Um, we have one legislative matter, we're asking to move that to September 3rd at 9:30 AM. That is the billboard text amendment, and that's a privately initiated text amendment. And the item numbers that I have shown here that are listed, these are the numbers that are from the July 16th agenda, that are referenced in the, um, in this PowerPoint.
Okay.
And lastly, we have the night meeting for the rezoning, the, um, there are 13 applications. I requested to break this up into two different days, that seven cases to move to September 24th. And then there were six cases requested to move to September 28th, and this is a part of what I mentioned earlier, where council, you could have the option, instead of having the last six cases on the 28th, you could select certainly, um, the 15th or the 17th. And these are all of the cases from July 16th that we needed to move to reschedule. And then beyond that, what I've also provided in an attachment for you with the, um, presentation was the actual calendar itself, which we can go through month by month if needed, but these are the dates we're asking. And do you have any questions for us, counsel?
Are there any questions at this time from any council members? All right, hearing none, uh, anything, Sam, or does that conclude your, your presentation?
That concludes the presentation, and I just need the motion from council. If there's, so.
Counsel, Martin Shelby, may I just make a few comments, just so you have a context? And if we could pull up the September schedule, the September, uh, hearing dates?
All right.
Again, I believe it's, it's, LaShawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's pleasantly, is, what you were talking about was moving things from the, the week of the 28th to the week of the 14th, the 15th or the 17th, is that what you were suggesting as an alternative?
Um, yes, there we go, here's the September calendar, and you can see that the 28th is where the six cases would be scheduled currently under this request. But you can see the week of the 14th, that the 16th has the budget hearing, and then the morning meeting on the 17th.
My recommendation is you give serious thought to not scheduling anything in advance of your budget hearings, because I know council usually has a lot of conferences and a lot of discussion prior to the first hearing of the budget hearings. So that would certainly, your preparation for whatever you do, uh, in advance of the budget hearings, might cut into your ability to, um, spend the time necessary that you usually do, uh, preparing for the budget hearings. If you do it on the 17th, counsel, you could see that you would do so, as it is now, you're scheduled at the end of the budget hearings to be ready for a 9:00 o'clock meeting. Uh, and if you do it at night, it would be a, um, a triple header in two days. So my recommendation is to leave things as calendar, um, as it's proposed, as it is. Um, and also, I should also point out one other thing to you. Counsel, historically, as the calendar is prepared each year, and if you ever have an opportunity, let's say on this calendar, to look at your November, your, your, your October, November, December, counsel has had a, 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 a policy that on the days of your regular meetings, you usually don't have night meetings. Your night meetings historically are scheduled not on the days of your regular meetings, but on the days of your CRA and your workshop. So you could see from this calendar, this is very aggressive, and you are going to be caught up, but you also have to know, um, and thank you, I want to, first of all, I, I, let me just say this. I spent a great deal of time yesterday, um, with, um, with Kate Wells and with LaShawn and with Dennis and their staff, um, to work through this. And I will tell you, they put in a tremendous amount of work on this, and it's very difficult. As a matter of fact, they are taking council's, um, uh, suggestion about, uh, going to, uh, lightening up because virtual meetings, it appears, do take longer. So they are going to be cutting back on the number of night public hearings that you have to deal with. Because I believe council had the suggestion that you no longer want to go past midnight. Um, so, so that being said, uh, it is aggressive, and, um, it's well thought out. And here's, here's what I suggest. What I suggest is you take the proposal as it's given, and if you want to give specific direction to staff, that they take into consideration that it's council's desire to not, not go past midnight, that you make that as a direction, that when they do schedule these things, that they take that, um, into account. You said it, but you have not put it in the form of a motion or a direction or a policy. So if that's something you wish to do, I recommend you do that as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shelby. Do, uh, any other, any council members have any, uh, response to the suggestions and comments by, uh, Mr. Shelby, uh, Ms., uh, Doc, anybody?
Dean Felder.
Are you, uh, are you going to take a motion, Chair?
Dean Felder has a question.
Well, Councilman Dean Felder has a question, then we'll, we'll entertain any motions or whatever happens.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I just need some clarification on this. So I'm looking at the calendar that's up on my screen, September 2020. I look at September 10th, and it says 6:00 PM, 10 re-, oh, excuse me, 10 quasi judicial rezonings. Um, I agree with Mr. Shelby, 10 quasi judicial rezonings using new technology, you know, virtual, et cetera, could well take us past midnight. Um, I'm wondering, I think it's some discussion I heard about.
I'm wondering, I think some discussion I heard about starting at at five, could we start, could we start at five on the tenth? Could we start at five on the on the twenty fourth? Is there any reason we can't do that on the twenty eighth? Just to, I I don't know if there's a statutory reason or or not, but if we could start at five, then there's a better chance we'll all be vigorous, and it won't go as deep into the evening.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kate Wells. If I could respond to that comment. With regard to the hearings that are already scheduled and noticed, we would be unable to move up the start time to five o'clock because they were already scheduled and noticed for six o'clock. But we could certainly look at the hearings that have not yet, for which notice has not yet gone out, if that is counsel's motion to move them up to five o'clock. So when you look at the August twenty seventh meeting, the notice deadline is next week, July twenty eighth. So I anticipate that some applicants may have already sent out notice for that meeting. But for the meetings in September, if that is counsel's desire to move the time to five o'clock, we would instruct the applicant to amend their notice to reflect that time.
All right, Councilman Ding Felder, is that his back?
Yeah, no, I I totally hear hear Ms. Wells, and I appreciate that. So there's no statutory reason we we don't do that. I think we should, I think we should enact that and modify the September schedule accordingly. All I've got.
Okay, I heard another, boy, was it Councilman Goos that was was wishing to speak? Or another council member?
I don't know if he was attaining a motion, Mr. Shelby's.
All right.
What question about staying late?
Based on the suggestions of Mr. Shelby, and then the the edits by Councilman Ding Felder about the five o'clock and whatnot. If you'd like to go ahead and make a motion, sir, unless there's any other discussion?
No, I would like to make a motion on the suggestion of Attorney Shelby as it relates to the late midnight hours, and also to Mr. Ding Felder's request as well.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Goos with a second from, do we have a second on this motion?
Ding Felder will second. Ding Felder will second, but I did have a clarification from Mr. Shelby. Mr. Shelby, what is what is the intent of the motion? If we're just saying we're not going to go past midnight, I don't I don't understand how that relates to the schedule that staff has in front of us.
Well, frankly, it mean, it's a motion that would go forward. It means that when, right now, counsel's rules as they presently state, your written rules, say to limit you generally that you can waive up until thirteen hearings per night. So traditionally, staff is scheduled up to thirteen hearings per night. If they go above that, they ask counsel to waive that. Virtually, the realization is thirteen hearings per night is is not doable, and it's not feasible. So if that's, unless you want to, counsel, certainly that's your pleasure, I don't recommend it. But if you want to, then amend your rules once we go virtual to give direction to staff that when they schedule these items, that they don't put thirteen, but they look at what's before them, and they schedule what they believe would be a reasonable, appropriate number of cases to be so that you don't have to go past midnight. You can go up to midnight, maybe a little beyond, but at least I'll limit the number of cases from what you're presently asking them, which is thirteen.
So so in the in the spirit of the motion, Councilman Goos, why don't we also add to add to our motion to limit the number of hearings to ten for the evening meetings and to start start them at five o'clock where possible?
I accept your amendment.
This is LaShawn, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is LaShawn Doc with Planning, Design, Development Coordination. I have a question on the motion. So are we stating that moving forward as applications are in and staff is scheduling by the month? Does that ten cases include continuances? Continue cases, you want to cap at ten?
I think, yeah, I have to because you're saying saying that if virtual, and virtual could take longer, that's what we're looking at capping it. I think that's the best move, in my opinion, but.
I just want to make sure we have clarification on that.
Doc, what I would suggest, what I would suggest is is the ones you're scheduling in advance, schedule them for ten. And if anything has to get continued, when the motion for continuance comes up, we can look at any availability and push it down the road. So so I think the continuances will have to suffer and bounce on down the road, or we can waive our own rules at that time.
So just so, this is LaShawn again, so just so counsel is clear, we are now on the September cycle. So that would be for the cases that are that we take in, starting with the September hearing date and moving over there. The rest, we already have in.
Mr. Ding Felder, if I can direct your attention to the the September screen in front of you.
Sir.
If you'll notice on the twenty fourth, it is seven land use cases, and on the twenty eighth, it's six. And as we move forward, the question is, when you get to be at one o'clock, two o'clock, what are you going to do with your remaining three or four cases? I'm trying to see if you can give the latitude to staff to judge based on the cases, whether there's controversy, certainly the staff knows that. Let them determine what number of cases will get you done by midnight as they as you move forward, as opposed to saying, you know, a discrete number. And then you're left with, you know, if it goes till three, are you going to go to three?
Well, why don't, why don't, why don't we just say, okay, Ms. Shelby, I agree. Why don't we just say a maximum of ten, starting at five P M? And then that way, if they, if in their judgment, they, you know, they believe that that you know, that that's not feasible, then they can be less than ten.
Because there's nothing in your motion that says you prefer not to go past midnight for night night land use meetings.
I know, but I'm not sure who has the match, the crystal ball either, but I'm okay with including that in the motion.
This is Charlie.
Councilman Moran.
I, listen, it makes no difference to me if I stay here one, two, or three o'clock in the morning, and I'm the oldest, but it's just got to be done one way or the other. I mean, we've been talking about this now for two hours, we ain't done anything.
Yep.
And Vera, if I may.
Councilman Vera.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I agree, I think, you know, the the main issue is we can put a certain number of hearings before us, but all seven of us just need to be able to move briskly with with care, with with analysis, et cetera, but just to be able to move because I believe it, I forgot who it was who said this, but on telephonically, these things go slower, it would appear. So we have to help pick up the pace, all of us, just so that we don't move too. My problem with going past midnight isn't, you know, some principle. It's just that all of us after midnight, like like I said before, our carriage is turned into a pumpkin, and we we really, really have got to be on our top game. And so I think it's incumbent on all of us to be efficient. I I would say that with our speaking, et cetera, et cetera, just my suggestion. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, this is.
All right. Yes, sir, go ahead, counsel.
Yeah, I just want to say for anybody who's watching, it's not just about us, and especially not just about us. The the public shows up at these meetings, and they have to wait for hours and hours and hours, and they get very frustrated. And, you know, people have to get babysitters, and they're paying for babysitters to be away from their kids and their and their family members. And I think we need some predictability in this for them, and and not to mention the staff who are sitting around for a long time, too. It's a it's a long night, thank you.
All right. Any three else?
Mr. Chairman, could the motion be restated for the purposes of helping the clerk?
Councilman Goos, if you'd like to restate the motion.
I I I move that the night hearings are limited to ten for the for the purpose of not going past midnight and begin on the September calendar.
Not the, not, okay, thank you, okay.
And also, and also to start, to start any, any of them at five P M instead of six where possible, correct?
Correct, any at five P M is correct.
All right, is that clear enough for the clerk?
Yes, it is.
All right, and what was the second on this motion?
Ding Felder was second.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Goos, second from Councilmember Ding Felder. Roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Anis Galco.
Yes, yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Just a point of order, does the chair get two votes or only one?
One.
That's a joke, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Nobody, nobody laughed at my joke the other day, so no, no laughter from me. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, so that settles that and how we move forward with the calendar.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Kate Wells, just a question for the clerk. Do we still need a motion to approve the schedule, or was that assumed within the motion that just passed?
That was not in the motion that just passed.
All right, so I can, I can ask for a motion that we approve the schedule as presented to us. Do we have a motion for that?
So move, goos. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Miranda has made the motion, who made the second?
Second, Goos.
Second, Councilmember Goos, roll call vote.
Clarification on the motion. Clarification on the motion. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but. Well, the motion is to approve it with the caveat of what the motion was that we just passed right before. So it's a modified, it's a modified version of the of the presentation that came to us from staff. Right?
All right, is that clear enough?
I mean, I I want to make sure I'm on the same page with everybody else. But I was looking at September, and now we've made that motion a minute ago that passed, so that modifies the staff's calendar slightly.
Yes, with the caveats and and modifications that were made in regards to some, if possible, at five o'clock, and limiting them to ten and and all that. Would that be all included?
Exactly, that's exactly.
All right. If that's clear, then then we can move forward. The motion was made by Councilmember Miranda, with I believe a second from Councilmember Goos.
Vera. Vera.
Yes. Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Anis Galco. Carlson.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, Ms. Wells, does that take care of everything in regards to the calendar and moving forward? Is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, I believe we can now go back to items twenty two and twenty three. Mr. Shelby, do we have to include twenty one, two, and three now that we can move those forward to set those for the public hearing?
I believe they may have been taken care of, Ms. Wells.
This is LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Yes, Chairman, items number twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three are included in the reschedule that has been adopted.
Perfect, now what about item number twenty five? There was a second reading, Mr. Shelby.
Item number twenty five are also included in the reschedule. This is LaShawn. Yes, it's also in there, I'm sorry, item number twenty five also.
May I ask, may I ask, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, how those should appear on the action summary? How would that be designated? There were no motions specific to those particular items, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty five. Is there, is there a motion necessary? Or shall we just, how do we address that in terms of the agenda?
I think if you look at item number thirty one, our request to move forward with all quasi judicial hearings, looking, I don't know if the wording is is proper, but the wording there in the in that item number thirty one description, I think would include just basically setting everything that hasn't been set to whatever we approve and agree with, I think. I mean, legally, that should be sufficient, but you're the attorney, I don't know.
Let me ask, let me ask the clerk, what's what's an appropriate way that they want to see this appear on the action, it's action summary?
I would say for twenty one through twenty three, you should probably set those specifically because they were on the agenda to be read out. Twenty five, if I'm not mistaken, that one, we just asked for the second reading to be set for a date and time in order to republish it.
So there needs to be action taken.
So this is Kate Wells. The clerk is insisting on action being taken separately, although the the proposed schedule has been approved. With regard to item twenty five, the proposed schedule that was approved would move this to September third at nine thirty.
Do we need a motion for that, or would that already be taken care of?
Oh, please, why don't we do that, please?
So we'll take a motion for item, I move to September third, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And we have a second from.
Goos.
Second from Councilman Goos, roll call vote, number twenty five.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Anis Galco. Carlson.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, with regard to twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, if Ms. Wells can provide the date, we can do all three at the same time.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Wells, if you have the date.
Yes, as approved under item thirty one, the date is September twenty first at five o'clock, five P M.
All right, can we get a motion from item number twenty one?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
You could do twenty one, twenty two, and three all at the same ti- time and date.
And Ms. Wells.
Twenty one, twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, Ms. Wells.
Second, something, Goos.
All right. Ms. Wells, if you could clarify the date for twenty two and twenty three.
The date is LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, Development Coordination. Twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three are scheduled for September twenty first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty at five P M.
Chairman, most twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, September twenty first at five P M, five oh one P M.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, we had a second from Councilmember Goos, roll call vote.
Vera. Goos.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Anis Galco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. I believe that concludes the entire agenda, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I just wonder if I can address item thirty two. I don't know, I don't know whether the staff wishes to add anything with regard to item thirty two, but I will tell you that they are working very aggressively to get this up and running virtually. I don't know, does staff want to address that? I do want to say one thing, counsel, that you have to be aware of, and I did discuss this with staff. I think that your decision to set everything virtually October twenty first, twenty twenty does not necessarily imply or infer that after October first, you will be back in person. So depending on what the public health situation is based on your discussion and your decision based on Dr. Holt's information last Tuesday. So what I'm going to remind you, counsel, is the notice requirement requires that petitioners have at least, if not more than thirty days in advance to get out the notice. So what that, your your motion from Tuesday really means that you're going to have to revisit the decision that you made. in the middle of August. So this is going to have to come back to you in some form or fashion to give direction to staff based on what the situation is. So October 1 doesn't mean you're set till October 1 because you're going to have to revisit at some point in time in the middle of August.
That's fine, we'll monitor the situation and see where we stand at that time and readdress it and go forward from there.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from staff, Teagle, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grimes, City Attorney. I have one housekeeping matter. I sent a memo to this effect yesterday. It relates to the Citizen Review Board. There were two items on your July 16 agenda related to the Citizen Review Board when that meeting was canceled. Those two matters were not carried forward to this agenda, so I wanted to make sure that they were in fact rescheduled. I've suggested in my memo that they be rescheduled to July 30 or whatever other date Council deems appropriate.
July 30 is our workshop, which of course is virtual. If I can get a motion, if there's any discussion. We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson with a second from? Second?
Miranda. Miranda.
The second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. And that was on the memo that I sent out with the agenda. We also have one other item that needs to be put on the agenda. It's the reso that Councilmember Vieira wanted for the Medicaid expansion.
Of course, Councilman Vieira, when would you like to put that on the schedule? What date would suffice?
I was actually going to move for that at the end, I mean, I think everybody had a chance to review my draft. This is controversial, I mean, can we pass it today or just to get it out of our way?
Is this a supporting Medicaid?
Yeah, I sent it again.
Okay, well, we can bring it up in new business, I don't see why not. I think that's how it's been brought up in the past.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode?
I kind of had the same kind of question in reference to the... Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
In reference to, yeah, I can hear you now. In reference to, I had made a motion back on May 28 in reference to the Human Resources Director to come and explain in reference to the do not hire policy. And I don't see a date of when that's coming back since that was supposed to be presented on the July 16 schedule.
At the time your motion was made, there was no motion to actually set it on July 16. All they did was receive the value request.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to him because I want to hear about that and I want him to be comfortable to tell me about this.
So let's make a motion during new business, sir?
Hi, it's me, good afternoon, Kelly Austin from Human Resources on. Councilman Goode, if you wanted to talk today, I'm happy to do that.
That's a point of privilege from the Chair.
If I do, sir?
I couldn't hear you, sir.
Go ahead, sir, if you'd like to, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Austin, I did read the report that you submitted, but I just have a few questions to ask you. Number one, have you ever heard in the city any of this terminology or any once spoke of this do not hire policy?
I've never heard the term used by City of Tampa employees as far as us having a do not hire policy because we don't possess one.
Okay, I find that odd because, you know, we had a situation a couple of months ago and I mentioned to you this terminology and everyone acknowledges that this exists. It may not be in the policy per se, but everyone acknowledges, other supervisors and other managers say that there is such a thing. Now, it may not be in the policy, but they're saying that there is such a thing where someone is terminated or whatever or got rid of, that if he applies for another job, it's an asterisk by their name to do not hire. Are you familiar with that or is there anything in the file?
So you're talking about somebody who worked for the city, I just want to make sure that I understand your question. Someone who's worked for the city and then they reapply to come back for employment with the city, is that the question?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have anything that puts an asterisk by someone's name. When you fill out your application for employment, it does ask you if you've ever worked for the city before. And so if you were to indicate yes that you did, Employment Services or the potential Hiring Department could make an inquiry to Employee Relations about former employee John Doe. And at that point, they could make access to their record. If they resigned, retired, whatever the reason was, they left for another job opportunity or if there was some sort of termination associated with it or some sort of disciplinary history, the Hiring Department and/or Employment Services does have the ability to review that record. So if someone was discharged from service from the city for something such as moral turpitude, that could preclude them from being considered for a position if they were applying for the city, depending on what that position was. But anybody is free to apply for any job at any time because each application is evaluated job-specific. So we don't have a blanket do not hire, anybody is free to apply. But logically, if there was something that got you terminated from the city, it could preclude you from getting future employment, depending on the seriousness of the infraction and depending on the job that you were applying for. And I'll use the example of if you had a termination regarding something that had to do with driving and you were applying for a position that required you to drive, you're probably going to get disqualified from that position. But that doesn't necessarily mean that you couldn't be considered for a non-driving position if you were to apply for something different. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, and again, and the reason I bring this up, situation and the situation was deemed this person wasn't hireable and we kind of did a little research and I'm glad that the HR department and the affected department were able to review this person's situation and this person was able to get hired back on with the city. But I think that the word on the street you could say is that this terminology is out there. But I would say is there someone who evaluates of a person and says, well, using your analogy, another department, the license was a driving issue, a fraction, and they was terminated, now they want to apply somewhere else. Is there a board or someone, they feel they're okay, if they're looking for another position but they're not getting it and they keep applying for different positions but keep getting disqualified? And I hear that often, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, well, what I would say is because, Councilman, we have had employees or former employees bring matters forward where they said they were being blocked by the city from being hired. And we've been more than willing to look at those and report back on those on a case-by-case basis. I'm not looking on a public call to give any names or, I'm not asking you to give me any names on this call, but if there are specific cases, I would ask that they be brought forward to Human Resources so that we can look at the file and we can evaluate. But initially, again, if you say you've worked for the city before, Employment Services is going to call over to Employee Relations and say, "Tell me about John Doe because John Doe indicates that he or she has worked here before and is there anything that I need to come and evaluate and look at?" So it starts with Employment Services, which is Mike Swain's shop. And according to Civil Service rule... Yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
And the reason I ask that question because I was a city employee once too, knew a lot of people and sometimes you get supervisors who don't like some people and, you know, sometimes get written up and get terminated and then when they, you know, they get a chance to see an opportunity someplace else, they don't get it or they continue to get blocked because maybe somebody's calling over and saying, hey, no, I don't hire them, but actually it was more a personal issue versus a person's work ethic or their performance. So I was just wondering about that, that's why I asked, was there a board or somebody wants to file a grievance and say, I'm being blocked, why am I still being blocked? That's why, that was my key point to asking that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The time for someone to appeal that would be at the time of termination through the grievance process or the civil service process as far as being rehired. Again, we're looking at things such, you know, that would get someone terminated for moral turpitude. Theft, workplace violence, you know, something, you know, of a violent nature. If somebody was terminated, again, I'm making this up, for theft, we're probably not going to want to rehire them, you know, for a cash handling position. But potentially, that trait could be viewed by a hiring manager as something that they don't see as something that they want in their department or, you know, that's something they're not willing to, you know, accept that candidate. That doesn't mean that somebody couldn't get on a certified list, but then they might not get selected for a position. But it does start in Employment Services.
Okay, I understand, thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. I believe that concludes everything. If we can go to new business by Councilmembers, I'll start at the end with Councilmember Vieira. Councilmember Vieira?
Sorry about that, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me find, I have a couple of items here and I apologize for that. I know it's been a long meeting, let me find my list. First off, I just wanted to go ahead, I know everybody has gotten the Medicaid letter, I assume their support, I don't think this is controversial. It's for activist groups, wanted local bodies to write in support of expansion of Medicaid. Support, if there's any questions from Council or whatnot, I would like to move that if I may.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vieira, can we have a second?
So moved.
The second from Councilmember Goode, let's do a roll call vote on this.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter? Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Councilman Vieira, do you have a second?
Yes, sir, if I may, just a couple of items, I have some backed-up ones here. So again, my apologies for timing. Tampa Police Department Officer Dennis Small will be retiring soon and he's done so much with regards to Hispanic outreach. I wanted to present him with a commendation tailored to, among other things, his work in Hispanic outreach here in the City of Tampa. And this will be done off premises, but...
Okay.
All right, we have Councilman Vieira has a motion, what is it, from Councilmember Miranda, roll call?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and now just two quick ones or retroactive when I did a commendation to be presented at the city's Americans with Disabilities Act event for the 30th anniversary of the ADA, if I may have that ratified.
All right, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, motion was made by Vieira, roll call.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and then last one, Don O'Neil, who's a longtime business person here in Tampa. His business Travel World Agency will have 30 years of being in service to the community and I wanted to do a commendation, again, obviously off premises.
Yes, sir. All right, do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, let's take a roll call vote.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Nothing else from this year, thank you, thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir, Councilman Goode?
Taking the chair, back on June 25, I pulled a motion that was made prior in reference to communication between Council and the administration. It was pulled for the July 16, but it never appeared on the July 16 agenda. I'm asking it go forward for July 30. To have, it was legal, the party was supposed to bring information back to us as it relates to that, remedies.
All right, so do you have a date for that or just?
July 30?
Okay, July 30, that our workshop under, we'll do it as staff reports if you are at the end.
It'll be fun.
Councilman Goode, I believe that is a one-week motion and I wonder if that gives staff sufficient time, you may want to inquire? Or they can always ask for a continuance if they're not ready. Up to you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grimes, City Attorney. That's fine, you can schedule it for the 30th, we'll be ready.
That'll be great, thank you.
All right, Councilman Goode has concluded, and do we have a second?
These are all these are stamps, right, these are, anybody can use.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfutter?
Yes.
Anis Galco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Do they all talk?
One more, yes, and one last one with the chairman. As you know, I think I'm the only councilman who's been a city employee, who's been through all of the cities, dealing with different departments. I receive and I know a bunch of you receive a lot of calls about a lot of situations with a bunch of departments, that's just including the police, but other issues in departments. And at this time, I'm asking, I'm needing some help. I want to make a motion in reference to the City of Tampa and the administration. Look at employing a Chief Diversity Officer for the City of Tampa. To be, the Chief of Diversity Officer will answer strictly to the mayor. Make sure that it is looking at its play, this is training, any type of injustice within the certain departments and have total access. I think it is needed for the City of Tampa, we're growing city, the complaints that we get, so I'm asking for a second.
I'll second, if I may. May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for that, Councilman Goode. On July 30, I believe it is, we're going to be discussing the implicit bias training that city employees get and certain things going there, including who does the training, whether it's outside, internally, et cetera, some real pivotal points there. So I think that could go hand-in-hand, but I'll slide the second, thank you.
All right, we have a second from Councilman Vieira, take a roll call vote on that.
Question on the motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Dingfutter.
Thank you. One question is process in terms of where does this motion head? And that sort of thing. I'm in favor of the concept, 100%. I do believe that there were about three or four mayors in a row who specifically had kind of a deputy minority person in the deputy position to look out for those issues and then over the last couple mayors, that seems to have gone away. I assume that's the intent of Mr. Goode, to try and recreate that very, very senior position. But in terms of process, Orlando, what do you want to do with this motion? I mean, is this a direction, a direction to put it in the budget?
That's correct.
Is this a suggestion to the mayor that we're asking for a report back? What do we want to do, tighten it up?
No, I'm asking for the motion for the Chief Diversity Officer to answer strictly to the mayor and be put in the upcoming budget. I think this is needed for the community, it's needed for so different departments. I think this is needed for the community, it's needed for so different departments, and I believe that it is something worthwhile that we should have in the city.
Okay, are you asking for a report back from the administration?
Yes, we're asking for a report back from the administration.
In response?
Yes.
You're breaking, you're breaking up, I can't hear you, I don't know, just breaking up on the air and there. Yes, this is the last one, response, uh, from the administration, in reference to the Chief Diversity Officer, that's strictly to the mayor, and also be asked for it to be put in the upcoming budget, I know that they're doing the budget now, so hopefully we can get that back in reference, uh, to a couple of weeks when they give it to present the budget.
If it hadn't been seconded, I'm glad to second it, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, does he want this back on July thirtieth, or a specific date?
Councilman Goode?
I'm sorry, my error. I'll give them a couple, I'll give them a couple of weeks, August, August sixth?
August sixth, under staff report?
That'd be fine.
Okay, all right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, the second from Councilman Dean Powder, a roll call vote.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dean Powder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, anything else, Councilman?
Thank you, sir, good for your leadership, sir.
Councilman Dean Powder?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, um, a few weeks ago, we had Judy Leacy scheduled from the STRAS to give us an update on the STRAS, especially under the COVID. Usually she comes in to give us an update every year, but, but especially under the COVID environment, and unfortunately, that meeting got canceled. So I'd like to figure out when an appropriate meeting would be to put her back on, uh, to address us.
Okay, when would you like to schedule her, we can schedule her virt-
Yeah, definitely virtually, and, um, uh, I don't know, Mr. Shelby, you have any suggestions on what, what, what's still open and viable?
Later, later, if we can, once we get through the, the, you know, if you can, I have a-
I want to do it, I want to do it before we go into full budget, so I guess August, sometime in August.
All right, I have August here, the mayor will budget virtually August sixth, the next regular meeting is going to be, well, we have a workshop the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh. Would you do that, the day of the workshop on the twenty-seventh?
July or August?
August twenty-seventh, if not, there's a CRA on the twentieth, but this isn't CRA for that.
Yeah, that would be fine, August twenty-seventh, August twenty-seventh.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dean Powder to invite Judy Leacy from the STRAS to do a virtual presentation, August twenty-seventh, do we have a second?
Second.
Vieira? Second from Councilman Vieira, roll call.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dean Powder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
And does that have a time set up, Madam Clerk, do you need a time for that?
Well, with that presentation, that's probably under the ceremony or activities.
Yes. Roll call next with Judy Leacy to get a time and, and do all that. Okay, thank you. All right, anything else, Councilman Dean Powder?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Hey, Councilman Carlson?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Petro?
Nothing today, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of little things, first of all, what I spoke about earlier today, they may do it in another council meeting regarding the affordable housing, how I think it should be a new toolbox, instead of, we've been using the old tools, and I'll bring it up in the next council meeting. Number one, number two, aside from Italian, because Italians are not, as I understand it, Hispanics, I'd like for you to tell me, all of us, next council meeting also, naming one Hispanic department head, thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Well, I, I've had this discussion with an ex-girlfriend years ago, she said, you're not Hispanic, you're Italian, but you're American, but, but I'm the son of immigrants. Anyway, that's another discussion, but who knows, there was never a writing-
You, you should have married her, because she was very smart.
No, 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 no. Very, very nice, no, no.
That's it.
All right, and I have nothing, can I get a motion to receive and call?
Don't move, sir, Charles Miranda.
Second.
Second from, uh, a motion, and a second from Councilman Carlson, um, roll call vote to receive and call.
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dean Powder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Petro?
Uh, hoping you can still hear me, Petro says yes.
Yes.
Or Enda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much, we are adjourned, goodbye.